Okay, fiscal year 20 budget hearing on Saturday, March 2nd, 2019. Those in attendance, the full Board of Selectmen, Moguln, Fox, DeeDee, Finance Committee members Linda Baffel, Richard Condren, Arthur Pennell, Terrence Mish, and Sheila Chamberlain, and we're starting the meeting now.
Is that your name on the, Richard? Is that your name on the, on the?
The binder.
Budget binder?
No.
No, it's not.
Whose is it?
I don't know who it is.
Sheila's.
Sheila.
You grabbed it from her spot?
I didn't grab it, did I?
Yes, you walked over here, you grabbed it and walked over there. I actually have it on the camera right up there.
Oh, okay, that was take one, we'll have take two now.
Yeah.
Always have to watch him.
I'll share.
Yeah.
Call 911 or what?
Is there another one for Mr. Penn?
There you go.
What does that say?
This is an.
You're welcome.
Is there another one for him?
You're supposed to pick it up, where is it now?
I was supposed to pick it up, but I emailed Robin and asked her to leave it because I worked out of town all week.
Yeah.
We'll begin though, right? We can begin where you're getting at.
Morning.
Good morning Phil. Hello, Board of Assessors.
You're down to five minutes, Paul.
We're doing just like you, we're going to take them up too.
All right.
Everything's basically almost the same.
Almost the same?
MLS has worked out fine. They get to send all the houses that are for sale without having to go there. So, for $400, we can do that, just with one, you have another one of those.
It pays for itself.
Pays for itself.
Is that information available to the public that comes in, or just?
You can, if you go on the regular listings, you can see some in Park Square. But when you get on MLS, you can break it down to rents, you can collect that.
If somebody comes into your office with a question, can they access that themselves directly, or is it just your office people?
I have a login for that.
Right, yeah.
But I mean, most of them come in with the same, whatever, Park Square, whoever is up on there, realtude.com. A lot of them come in and go through this thing.
People aren't going to let us into their house, they're smart, so the only way we can get in is either break in or go into MLS.
I've done an open house before.
Yeah, go to an open house.
Very clever.
Sneaky.
That is clever.
I talk away, I'm not going to go in there and not, you know, stalk them.
Right.
No, you just have a tape measure when you're measuring room. But yeah, you're not stalking them, no.
Maybe it's just, you just look at the levels. Sometimes you find something in the basement.
Basement or the attic, right?
It's finished or something.
The mother-in-law in the attic, is that what?
Well, I don't know, Russ, how's that work?
Hey, to stay off of Davis Road, all right?
And we're in the, we're in the process of, we had one clerk that retired, so we're getting a book interview for a new clerk to come in there, so that's going to be a wash. We've got a lot of new building going on down the country club, so we need to full complement the office. You know, or to go somewhere, it's up our office, as you'd expect, so there'll be a lot of new growth down there, which your car will be wanting Sue every day for, like he usually does.
Along the road, absolutely.
You broke a record this year, January 5th, you asked for new growth. That's your record.
That is true. I am trying to put the budget together soon. Lot of, lot of uncertainty in the air about other things.
Our REVAL, you know, consultant, that seems like a lot of money, but we, we had a case on the appellate tax board about a month and a half ago, two and a half million dollar fight, open evaluation, we won, so that money paid for, for him, so I know the appellate, which we have to deal with, but, so anyway, so, we actually probably wouldn't have won that case if it wasn't for him being there with his expertise, which is why we have him, so, him and the hearing officer, we're both speaking the same language, so it worked out well in our, in our favor to have him there, so that's, that's money well spent. Other than that, it's just normal operating stuff, and whatever it takes to run the office. Do what we do.
Okay.
Okay.
When do you normally do, you said REVAL, is that every five?
Five, five nowadays, switched it from three to five.
Three to five?
Yeah.
So when's our next one due?
Twenty-one.
Yeah.
But you still do updates on an annual basis.
Oh, yeah. Your insurance, your old.
Right, yeah, because we're always looking for that new growth.
And that's more of the new thing. The DOR makes communities update the values on an ongoing basis now. So there's no big hits from REVAL.
So when we get to that REVAL, it's not like it used to be years ago.
Right, oh my god, what's this, right?
And they break it down, because if I change condition, so now I have a conditions or adjustment line versus new growth, so obviously if it wasn't there before, is there now? That's captured in the true new growth.
Right.
Anything beyond that would be called an adjustment, so they're kind of, they're splitting it right out to the wire, you know?
And basically what we do with Roy, Roy pops around the office constantly, there's, there's always something going on that needs to be looked at, something comes up constantly, so Roy being that he works with seven or eight other towns in the area, and he's right up on all the laws with the state, he knows all the people, he has a little more expertise, so for, he can walk in and he'll sit down at the, you know, computer, he'll go, no, this is a little off, and he, he fine tunes everything, so when we have to send our stuff in.
It's correct.
Everything's on spot, and we get our tax rate back quick, and life is good, and all that happens because we have him around constantly, he pops in and out, so.
He does Westfield and Branville also.
So that's, that's money very well spent, I mean, it just keeps our office, you know, I mean, these, these girls do a good job, but he's just kind of like the overseer, yeah, this has to be adjusted, or no, we're good, and off we go, so.
Thirty-seven years, he said the other day.
So.
Perfect, ten minutes exactly, you guys are great.
We did good, didn't we? Thank you very much.
All right, you guys have any questions for him?
And we do appreciate being first, but.
Nothing.
Right, you recognize you're the most important board.
In my mind, the assessors will always be first.
Always know who won, because it starts with a. Order of health would be second, if I remember. Historical comfort.
Oh, Michelle's a little hurt back there.
I was going to say. What would the appeals board do for you?
The former Marine would like a word with you, sir, in the hallway.
In the hallway. And it's not dropping, give her 10 either.
Be careful going down the stairs.
I'll take the elevator.
Yeah, I can't fall too far.
I'm sure somebody dropped some corolla on the stairs, and one of the assessors are going down, so. All righty.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Sue.
Take care.
I'll make sure I take the right truck when I go.
That's okay, give us the keys.
Yeah, check your pockets, they've been switched now.
David's here.
David, good morning, how are you?
Good morning.
Historical society.
A little cold, but that's all right, part of being, you know, getting out this time of year.
Just as long as you don't give it to us, David.
Yeah, that's right, I know, the last one really kicked through pretty good.
We all had that.
I think it's still there, just when it feels like coming back up.
Four weeks.
I'll get back on track here, as far as time goes.
And we appreciate it.
Well, we don't see any need to change our budget from last year to this year, we actually spent very little money in this past year, primarily because we didn't get around in the springtime to installing the grave markers we had bought the previous year.
Right.
Variety of reasons, member dropped off, we lost a member, and just a lot of personal conflicts that our schedules for the remaining four never worked out to get those markers planted. So we have a set of markers already in our inventory, so we didn't purchase additional markers in our past budget year, but we'll get these planted this springtime, and obviously we'll then replenish our inventory with additional markers. So we will have a, probably a sizable purchase in line for those. We typically spend, you know, close to $700 a year on markers. Nothing substantial other than, you know, coming up, other than incidental expenses, which may raise slightly, what with the old library being sold, you know, we might have some, I don't know what at this point, the select board has been very generous in picking up all of the expenses associated with the old library, you know, lawyer fees and maintenance fees and everything else, get that out of our historical budget, but I don't know if there, since we're now getting into applying the preservation restriction, if there might be some requirements imposed upon the historic commission that we feel, you know, we should cover out of our expenses. We do have, one of our members does want to go to a seminar, it's not a very expensive seminar, so we will be adding, we will be hitting our seminar budget slightly during the course of the year, so, you know, our budget isn't that big to begin with, so I would just request the budget same, and we should be able to work with it very nicely.
Okay.
What is the status of the sale of the library?
The lawyers are working out the business language right now.
Who's buying?
Scott Lamont from Tynick Lansky is the only bidder and the accepted bidder, so, and he has a track history of working on buildings and turning them around in town.
Everybody wanted to buy it after the fact. They all came out of the woodwork, but he was the only one that came in with an actual bid that did the whole proper deal.
And I believe they came in to visit you already, David, they came into your meeting.
Yes, we had a, our last meeting, this Monday, but our last meeting, yes, Scott came in.
Good, yeah.
We have good dialogue with him.
Right, so Scott's attorney's working with Ben Coys right now.
Another, one other item that is raising, of raising importance on our list, things to do, is, is get a project underway to get the headstones fixed at the old cemetery, and again, I don't see our budget, our annual budget being hit by that, but that will certainly be a CPC budget item.
Absolutely.
I believe the cemetery commission is pursuing that on their side.
Right.
But they'll need your support for CPC.
Along with the friends of the old cemetery too, have done an outstanding job, working with the cemetery commission.
Gene.
Yeah.
Is he, is he actually, is he on the cemetery committee?
No, he is, he has organized the friends of the old cemetery, but he has done a tremendous amount of work in, and the, locating the headstones, researching, GPS, working with the individual who's presenting a plan to start restoration, so, and getting cost estimates, so, he's doing the lion's share of the work.
Who are you talking about, Gene?
Gene Throh, he's doing an unbelievable job.
Very fortunate.
Yeah.
Oh, not kidding, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, feel better.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We're on a roll, we're ahead of schedule. Treasurer, collector?
I don't know, I don't seem to be number one or two, so.
We only said that because Paul was here, and he has hurt feelings, you're actually number one.
We've got to wait for Conley.
Well, and, and David too.
I'll take second to Michelle, anyway.
There you go.
Historically, you've been our favorite.
Oh.
Aye, aye, aye.
So I guess I'll just do my handouts really quickly first.
I hope they're.
Do we handout?
Yes, my tax title.
We didn't study.
Yeah.
Oh, am I making a joke, I shouldn't.
Is this multiple choice task for us?
Just don't bring your wife into it.
Yeah, she couldn't stop laughing the other night. She goes, what are you saying, so I think I should just scare me, she goes, I better scare you.
Oh, thank god, I'm not on the list.
Oh, okay.
Is it the same, or?
I think it's the same, one page, Michelle.
For the tax title, yes.
All right, so we got.
That's what you want it to be, you want it to be getting smaller each year, that's the goal.
All right, so we got extra.
Go.
It's a reading obituary, make sure it's not in.
Not on it.
So, all of my old ones, you'll see to the right of the tax title list, at the very top, it starts with 2013, that's fantastic, because when I first got here, it was in the bin 1900s, so, we had worked really hard, you know, the attorneys have done their due diligence, Land Corps has, you know, thrown a wrench in there, because it takes time with that, but that's where we're at, we're kind of current, actually, five years is not too bad, when I got here, it was over 20-something, you know, so.
Well done.
Kind of aggressive, but it's looking good. And actually, two people on this list just fell off as of Friday, so it's a little smaller. They came in late Friday afternoon. Just a side note, thanks, but we'll see that they're still on the list.
I know, I'm trying, I'm trying. I was hoping you were going to tell me that that was the one that came off Friday.
Nope, they're still on the list.
Damn it.
All right, so I don't know where you want to start, I can say, if you want to start with the tax title one, that's combined with the fourth, we'll go through that one. At the tax title, I like to leave alone, like they tried to do a dip by taking some funds out, it's just not feasible for us to just keep maintaining this good, small list, we have to, we have to be on top of things, so, when I finally see it, I mean, I need to drop, I definitely will, but I'd like to at least to stay with the 25,000 and not come in higher, but going down, I saw that that wasn't good, so I was cutting it really close. I don't know, any other, any questions on the tax title? Straightforward. I will say that there's a lot of bills out there right now, that they're trying to kill with the tax title process, and I am second VP to the Treasure Collectives Association, and I become chair of the legislative next year, and so this year and next year, I'll be fighting to kill a lot of those bills, because it could, it could ultimately hurt the cities and towns with the darts of the process, so. As far as the town clerk section, that varies from year to year based on elections, so for fiscal year 20, we have two elections, the presidential primary, which will be March 3rd, and then our annual, May 12, 2020. So the budget always reflects just that, how many elections we have, so that's overall, everything in there, except for two lines, I did make, I, sorry, one line, conference and travel, which will, I'll explain also in the treasure collector, and that is, I have, you know, I have a new assistant, so I have two, and I'm starting to send her to training and stuff, so that's all that impact is, is from that piece.
And you got the voting, you got all the voting booths now, you got the voting machines?
I have the voting booths, they're obviously intact, the machines will be here shortly, they had to do a back order, but I had been completely promised, that I'll have them training and everything before the May election, so it'll be fun, so. I think that's it, there is another town clerk related, but I put it on the treasure collector sheet for some reason, which is this handout I gave you guys. There, it's, this is new, I'm just asking if I could, it's a software program, and what it's relating to is all of our appointments and tracking them for all the boards and commissions that we have, everything's done in Excel spreadsheet, and with this Excel spreadsheet, I've noticed over the years that things tend to accidentally drop off, or whatever the case may be, and it doesn't keep a history, we have to go back to spreadsheets that have been changed, so on and so forth, or we have to go into our books and see who signed, and try to follow through a particular board. This is a software where it keeps all your history for, you know, those particular boards, who came on, who resigned, you know, it just follows all the way through, because there's been, there's been some challenges between the select board's office and my, and my office, trying to keep this data up to speed, and I'm hoping that I can provide them a tool that would help streamline that just a little bit better, because it is multi-offices trying to work together to keep everything in line, and things do change a lot though too, you know, we, we, you guys are pointing to certain people's boards, and all of a sudden, things are changing, and we're not finding out sometimes until after the fact, but, so those are the unavoidable things, but there are some things I'd like to avoid, and trying to just get this intact, so if you can consider it.
Did you list the cost of that on here?
Yes.
Is that the onboarding?
Yes, I put $1,000 on that.
Is that an annual cost, or you buy it once, or?
It would be an annual cost. The annual cost is $800, so, but the whole package, I, it's $800 to start, and then I just put a little bit, just in, just in case there's any other glitches to the first year, but then it's $800 after that.
If you're trying to keep track of boards and committees, would you also want to participate in helping to purchase the drone, so you could keep an eye on some of the boards and committees, members, you know, on weekends?
I, I could do that, absolutely, and we'll have a live on TV, so it's.
I think that's the only department that's not asking for a drone.
Seriously.
But it is, it is important, because you know, with people on boards, if they have associates, then you got people being, sometimes they go away, and we have some boards that take people and make them associates in one part of the year, and then they make them full members in another part, and if you get into that with land use boards and other boards that make statutory voted decisions, you need to know who was in office at what time, so you can know when the permits are voted, if they could ever be challenged, so that's why it's an important tracking tool.
It is.
I don't disagree.
And this software also allows for us to link it to the website, so as we're making our changes to the boards, you're able to see it on the front end. Right now, Jim goes into all of them and makes those changes on individual request, so it would just be an automatic thing.
Is that any money you can get from the state, is there a grant or anything like that up there for something like that?
I am not aware on this at all, you know, this is just one of the vendors that comes to the town clerks associations and tells, I don't, if there is anything linked to a state contract, we would know about that, I don't know about anything with regards to this.
Have you talked to any other town that has bought this program?
He provided some clients that he had, so I went out and looked at it, but I'm just seeing the backend, I'm not actually seeing, yeah, I'm seeing probably on the backend.
But this would keep track of things like the, who took the ethics test and all that stuff, too?
It would have a lot of that as well, he did come in and give us a demo as well, so we did see the backend of it, but we, you know, we haven't gone to a live site, that was just a backend of a demo study, so.
I did just take it, by the way.
Did you?
Yeah.
Did you pass?
I did.
Okay.
Did we, did we receive a reimbursement from the state this past year for the change in the voting procedures, you know, having early voting and all that, was there ever a reimbursement to the communities?
The only thing that we have been getting back is a portion of early voting, yes.
So there was activity there?
Yes.
In terms of reimbursement?
Yeah, not the full.
Right, did we actually get any money?
Yes, we got some money.
Okay.
And I think you're, you're using.
It was like $500, I can't remember.
I mean, obviously, we have a special town meeting coming up that wasn't planned for, so that's another issue with, with voting.
Well, in my current budget, yes, it will affect, I'm also putting together, as requested, the expenses that's going into this particular meeting, so.
Yeah, Franklin Land Trust is going to reimburse the town, but, for this special town meeting. But, if we, we still may have to front the cost, she still, if she runs a deficit, you still may have to do a FinCom reserve to her office to close the books, but then, she would get a check that would go to the general fund and close out with free cash.
Right.
So it's still gonna, it's gonna even out, but it's still an accounting issue.
Sure, so that reimbursement, would you sense that that's a one-time deal, or maybe an every year?
Well, every early, we've had two.
Two.
And it's always promised to us on the front end, it's not in the budget, but we'll work on that, and they do, they'll, they'll wait for the supplemental budgets that are coming through, and they'll fight to get it put in there, and they did, but, they, they make a promise, but it's still never a guarantee, but so far.
But didn't the auditor step in?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, there's always, there's always people that have to step in and do it, I mean, fight for it and what have you, but, I mean, it's millions and millions of dollars, we're only getting a small little amount, so.
We went to a. At the end of the day, the legislature has to appropriate the money, even if the auditor recommends it.
Right.
There was a threat, well, there, there was a teeter with regards to actually doing this for primaries as well, and they had us all on edge for the entire summer, well, people were taking vacations and what have you, and you really need to be around for it, so they went from, it could be possibly a full two weeks, down to five days, and then it nixed it literally at the last minute, so that, that was spoken about years ago, I mean, when they were implementing early voting, that they were going to do this to a primary, so I still see it coming soon, it was supposed to happen this last one, so I'm.
So that's not built into, that's not built into your budget, so?
It is not built into the budget, because it was nixed, so I decided, okay, yeah, so if they do come back, and it will be last minute, this is the way it's been happening, unfortunately, they will make a very last minute decision, so, yes, it is not in here for early voting.
So we could end up being on the hook for front that money again.
Michelle, one last question on the onboard, who maintains that site, is that from your office, or is it going to be a joint?
It would be from our office.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have the time and manpower?
Well, it's kind of different than the spreadsheets, it's just now, yeah, instead of being a spreadsheet base, it's now a database, and Cindy will be able to see the, you know, she'll be able to get into it, but not make changes, just so she can, yeah.
Anything else?
No.
Nope.
Yeah, I just talked about my clerk, but I didn't, the other sheet, though.
Election.
145, oh, I just talked about elections, I'm fine, I'm done with that one, so 145, that's why I had a few changes I just wanted to just kind of talk about. So the dues line, and the conference travel, all relate to the other one that I was mentioning, just trying to get her to start taking some classes, my focus is getting just certified, and this is the year she's supposed to take the test, so she's, she's first, and then I'll be working, and, yeah, it takes several years anyway to take all the courses, so, so that's that one, and then the financial advisor, we changed to FAS, we went from Eastern, because Eastern is no longer in the business, we're now we're giving it, you know, you fast.
Well, Yoni Banks has a subsidiary called Ufasi.
Yes, Ufasi, so anyways, we're, so their, their fees, $2,000 opposed to $1,500.
They're more money.
And printing, because our current printer that we sent out our tax bill is increasing their rates tremendously, since I've submitted this budget to you, I have actually gone out to several other vendors, because I'm not happy with that increase, I never am, so, we will be changing vendors, so I'm hoping that I can stabilize this, this line, okay? So I'm going to finish out this fiscal year with that vendor, just for smoothness, and then I'm going to start a transition in Elberg, so I've already met with that new vendor, so, but that was after I submitted this budget. That's it in the operation, I brought up last year, we can choose not to discuss, it's kind of the same scenario, but it will, it's just that part-time, individual, very, very part-time, but it's, it's to enhance the cash flow by going from semi to quarterly and a few other items as well, so whenever there is a possibility to address this, I would like to, but I will keep it in the budget until that time.
Any questions, anyone? Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of the day.
You too.
Beautiful day, yeah.
Thank you. She leaves, we're still here, yeah.
You know, when you gave.
I was going to make some smart ass remark about.
That's, I'm the smart ass in the room, so be careful.
Good morning.
Good morning, how you guys doing?
Good morning, thank you. So, we asked for, we don't do the 5% decrease, because then we would become decertified, and, but I was able to do a level funded, instead of a yearly level funded this time, but I mean, it is like to the penny to become certified, so we don't really have flexibility We got the maintenance numbers from Bob Johnson, so. So our maintenance contracts will will be staying pretty much the same. Um that covers things like our copiers and we did replace one of our copiers, so it's under warranty this year. So we shouldn't be, need change there. Computer line support, that is um what the fees that we pay to C W Mars. And they're the ones who assess us, so we don't have any legal room there, so that went up slightly. Electricity, that was making our budget kind of level funded, but it appears that we're being charged more this year than we anticipated. So we're gonna probably have a deficit this year and that accountant have to ask for more funding for a transfer. So this number is probably too low for the next year. Fuel, we seem fine. Telephone, okay. Dues, we found all the new assessments and that should be fine. Um the bindery, we've had to change binderies because the one that we use is no longer in business. And this will be the year we take the um annual reports from town meeting every so many years when we bind them. So they're more permanent and they go on our collections, so we go back. So this will be the year we'll have to bind. Conference and travel, we left the same. Supplies, I bumped that up because supplies costs never stay the same. It seems we're going through a ton of copy paper this year. Programs, I've left the same. And I had decrease the informational materials because that's where I got some of the other money to kind of levels funded. My requested budget, um Bob Johnson was gonna go up a little bit on that. I could leave the maintenance contracts the same. I could leave the computer support the same because that was already quoted to us. We really need more money for electricity, but I didn't change that. Fuel, I have the same. I left the same. Dues the same. I went up for um conference and travel a little bit. Because we're almost totally through that money. We still have a couple more months left for this fiscal year. Supplies, I got one, I bumped it up. Programs, I did ask for another two hundred and fifty in my request budget. And I bumped up the informational materials. For new line items, apparently, for some reason, the library never had minor equipment listed. The other departments do and post them. And so I put in a request for that. We've already just had a purchase a typewriter, believe it or not. We do have a typewriter at the library. We used to have two, both of them failed. One of them we use to make the little spine labels that go on the head edge of the books. And we had a public access one which actually got used, much to our surprise. If I had more money, I probably would replace that because we do have people that come in quite frequently to use that. They haven't been recently because it's been broken. For staff, our children's librarian, one that we have during the daytime, is two twenty-two and a half hours. And she's been with us for a long time and very experienced. And what I'm saying has nothing to do with her performance on the job because she does an excellent job. But there's just too much work for her to do. She can't accomplish it all, it's through all through the cracks. But um young adult librarian who also does reference picks up some of it. I pick up some of it, but it's just too much. And now I think the director's position is getting too much for us to pick up some of her work and also for the teen reference librarian. So there are some things that just aren't getting done. I do know that we have a lot of interest and we put it in our five-year strategic plan to run some kind of program for mothers with infants. It's one thing we don't have. It's one thing that the M B L C, Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners is pushing. And I just don't see how she's gonna have time to plan this, carry it out, plus all the other things she has to do, searching for grant, just even promoting programs. So we're always adding more programs and we need to promote them, plan them. She does work at home. I know we all of us do almost all our book review reading at home to decide what we're gonna purchase. So she's already doing things at home, so. I really think that that position needs to be full-time. I left on here from last year on converting one circulation position to full-time. Oh, I should go back. The children's librarian is already benefited, so she does receive benefits, so that wouldn't be a change. The part-time circulation to convert one of those so we can have somebody to oversee and have consistency, that would be a change. That is not a benefited position. For capital, I have finished carpet replacement. This would be the last bit and then the whole library has been re-carpeted. Um if you've been into the library, they did do a good portion this year. They did the whole adult section when you walk in. They use the carpet squares. It looks, personally, I think it looks great. They also did our community room. That they did the rolled carpet.
This is for the the other two offices behind the desk? So it's to complete everything?
That's would be complete everything, yes.
This would complete everything, so we should. Every time we we call it one thing for this amount, for five thousand for carpeting and then painting, and then we we ran into an issue. We're better off just to say carpeting and painting with the number. So then we don't get into an issue with the bid number. Because remember, we were short on one and had to come back and it ended up delaying them. And it came out well, they did a good job.
They did an excellent job. The tiles look really good.
So, yeah, we do need to finish that building just like we did this one.
And unfortunately, the interior painting still is continuing. That won't be done this, finished this year. But I'd like to, if they're gonna carpet the offices, those should probably be painted right before the carpet goes down. And then the young adult section is you're walking the doorway to the right, so it's part of that main room that still hasn't been painted and behind the dust. Not if there was money left down the hallway, but. I didn't ask for a drone.
You didn't get the memo?
And then we still eventually like to move the data rack and have the wiring done in the building. But I know the town is working on a total assessment of all the buildings and I think whatever they come up with was the most important. That's what will work.
Yeah, one of the things, one of the things that Doug and I and Lauren and Jim are dealing with right now is the more important prioritized items from the state governments and their vendors' assessment on our cybersecurity. So we're having to go and address those things in, you know, right now through a large grant that we just got and a local Shia that we had to commit to to be voted on in May. So that's uh, you know, security is the important thing at this moment under cybersecurity.
I had a question. I noticed on your five-year capital request, are there still issues with grading, degrade around that building?
Yes.
Do we still have a grade issue over there that was never resolved?
I don't, I I know Bob has had to resolve some things and we had Chris view come in and do some work, but I'm not sure where the uh, you know, whether it's been totally addressed. I know the building was assessed by um Tyne Bond under the municipal buildings review that were done. So we should be getting a report within the next month from our engineering firm on all the buildings and the types of issues. And part of the scope was to look at the exterior and the siding and drainage and things like that.
That was one of the things that they addressed because our basement is still damp, so we can't store any books or anything down there. It'd be great if we could do some storage down there. But they felt that it might just be a grading issue, not just, but it might be a grading, a grading issue.
See what Tyne Bond says?
Yeah, we can talk to Bob when he comes in for his budget.
There's the slope from the woods on the left there as you face the building. And then we have the hill coming down from the high school.
Yeah, it was always an issue way back when because the building was sighted just a little too low originally for the site. And it wasn't, it wasn't accommodated. And now we have all kinds of what irrigation pipe and wiring and utilities under there. I don't know what would have to be addressed to actually seriously regrade the back of the library. Maybe something?
It was a very dry year this year too, so I'm sure that.
Essentially dry, yes.
Well, there's been water based issues with the building since the beginning. When the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners came through in the very beginning, they told us we couldn't use it for storage for for books, things like that.
So this is Diane's last budget she's submitting. She's, she is going to enjoy her retirement at the end of this fiscal year. She's made this decision in the last, you know, couple of months. So we should be recognizing her for her years of service and thanking her.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I've enjoyed all twenty-three years of it.
Wow, yeah. Right.
It was a tough decision. It was maybe mixed feelings, but.
I will appreciate it.
Maybe you can buck around a bit.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, lady.
Thank you very much.
You might as well come right up, you know.
Just you?
Just me. Shadori was supposed to be here, but.
I know that big Al can't handle.
It's a big budget.
That's the way he starts it off.
That's why we gave you fifty minutes.
Talk slow.
What's your life history?
Go ahead, sir.
We basically have kept our um, our budget at a minimum and tried to be very frugal. So we're not really asking for any, anything out of um capital because we just recently got our file cabinet, which we needed because the maps are are growing quite a bit. Basically, everything else has stayed the same. As far as the conference and travel, right now, we have, we have two people going to the Holy Cross. They have a annual convention where they have planner one, two, three, you know, so Marcus and Jessica are going there. And our supplies basically have stayed the same.
No drone?
There was talk of it, but not from our, not from our department.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
I'm sure you'll be seeing that from other departments.
Yes, we will.
So with the, we have a little bit of an uptick in building in town. You're, got all the bases covered?
Yes, I'm keeping busy. There's more anticipated subdivisions in the works. Hey, I haven't really come to the town yet. Some up off the hillside. They're never really coming in for the next days on the east side of the Co-Southland Country Club. I think the last meeting in March. There's a few, few other commercial entities that are in the, are in the works.
Yep.
Wonderful.
Any other questions for him?
Just out of curiosity, the gravel permits and things like that down in the industrial park.
Yes.
Approximately how many more years before that should be phasing out and they should be?
I would suspect in the next ten years.
Next ten years.
The the biggest one that still has the most to do would be um the one owned by Shaker Farms Golf Course.
Okay.
Tilcon is sort of reaching their limits. And then of course, the one gravel, the lane, the own lane permit, that's where the operating engineers have, have testing facilities.
Yeah.
Are going there. They they should be coming in shortly. I think they finished most of the work, which was a good use for it.
Yeah.
They're not gonna be taking anything off the site. They're gonna have one, one class will learn how to excavate and then learn another class how to properly compact and backfill. So there's no, nothing, no materials coming off the site.
And nothing endangering the aquifer or anything?
No, 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 they're, that's pretty well marked out.
Okay.
And everything they're using, you know, is well outside of danger.
Okay. And and the process at the end, when they have to repurpose the site?
Right.
What kind of requirements, Al, do they have?
Well, I know Shake, I usually use Shaker Farms for example. What they want them to do is they want to move, they've got a couple greens in Westfield that are always underwater. What they want to do is they want to actually move some greens so it's drier. And there's also been some talk of their part, tentatively, maybe putting in some sort of a bed and breakfast, a small. If they, if you want to have tournaments, you have to have places for people to stay. So there's that talk, as well as the industrial endeavor. But there are, there are, they do have, they they do have to do a plan of ultimately what they have to do.
It's in the bylaw.
And and regrading and things like that?
It's a reuse plan. It's supposed to be submitted to the planning board as part of the conclusion to a, because these, the, all of those have a significant bond associated with them. So they're supposed to put a reuse plan together so that the existing, sorry, Alan.
It's okay.
There's a, the existing industrial park where Hudson Drive came down to Wally Way, that was part of a plan, a reuse plan of that. When they finished that, they decided to make that into industrial park land and carve off the lots and put a road in and utilities and infrastructure, so.
Is that in the special permit?
It's part of the bylaw.
The bylaw, but is it also in?
Special permit subject too, right.
Yes, in the books.
And we, and.
Special permit requires them.
And we require them every two years to up their bond, you know, renew their bond. And we also ask it, ask bills to make sure that they're building in accordance with the approved plans, which I have. And again, the aquifer is of major importance. They gotta be ten feet above, the the bottom of the excavation is gonna be ten feet higher than the actual height of the aquifer.
I think in the end, everybody just wants to make sure that something else will be built there when that part of its lifespan is over. It'll be the next chapter.
Another ever source is actually coming in as part of the, part of that gravel. They're might be looking for another extension of solar. Again, there's a lot, there's a lot of uses that people come and they're enticed by credits and money is running out. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice about getting another cold.
Be interesting to see if if any of those guys, because I know we talked to Til, uh, Mr. Tilcon, about continuing Hudson Drive through.
Yes.
Eventually connecting up somewhere down Sam West or Tannery.
Typically, yes. That would be the best thing to do.
That would be.
And sewers, sewers available in the, in the bike trails. So sewers could be brought into Sam West and ultimately backdoor, trying to get it closer to Route Ten.
So it's going both ways, they could go Sam West and to a Hudson.
Yeah, there's a develop, there's a contractor on Sam West that is talking, he's been talking to Dick and Indy about extent. He's gonna, he's buying some additional land from um T J Welch. And he wants to put in a couple more additional buildings. And in lieu of putting in septic, they do have connections left. So rather than bringing up a, a six-inch lateral just for him, it would make sense to bring an eight-inch up.
Yep.
And that's in the works, tentative plan.
Might be nice to contemplate access to that entire area if there are, you know, proposed projects in the pipeline or coming down a pipeline. Think about all that, you know, more comprehensively instead of, you know, here we have a proposed project that's gonna have access to the college highway.
Right.
Might be interesting to contemplate and plan for some other access back out Hudson Drive as, as you progress.
Correct.
In developing that area.
Yeah, that would make so much more sense right now to tie that in and get that whole area at as close proximity sewers. You know, our industrial areas unfortunately over the aquifer.
Yep, that too, sewers.
They also, but they're, they looked at that once before, right, to come up? Hudson, the problem is there's so much vacant land there, they didn't know how to assess the E D U's to the property because you have no idea what the potential use would be. the EDUs to the property because you have no idea what the potential use would be. So it was tough to come up with the number.
And sewers is part of the consideration, but it's access is part of the consideration.
Oh, absolutely. No, no, absolutely, yeah.
You know, I mean, trying to get something started in here that makes sense long-term instead of ending up with a patchwork of ins and outs and.
I think the access is important first because then that will help everything else.
Yeah.
Because that creates the right of way.
Yeah.
That you can put the utilities within.
Yeah, sewer is a deep disutility, so it'd be good planning to put the deep, you know, sanitary sewer in if there's going to be a continuing access.
Yeah.
And now with a traffic light there, that would help, that would help the industrial park also.
Well, thank you for that information.
Thank you, sir.
All right, have a good day.
You too.
Thank you.
Go home and rest.
Oh, yes. I got products.
Yeah, we'll take the town accountant while she's here. Come on up.
I know you guys were going to take a break.
You are early and we appreciate that.
Good morning, Lon.
Good morning.
Long time no see.
For the accounting budget, we're just asking for, you know, level funded, you know, so keep doing what we're doing, keep going to trainings that we need and increases, you know, and the standard, you know, the audit and the Gatsby is asking for the same levels. Questions?
That level is. That was very good.
Yeah, Russ has a question. Ask her something.
Well, I was, no, I was just going to say, and it came up the other night, and I want everybody to be aware how hard you are working on your credentials for this position and how much we appreciate it.
See, oh, two years has gone by pretty fast.
It's gone by. I can't believe how quickly it's gone by.
Oh, just wait.
All right, well, let me do, say something. Mean and nasty, just kidding. There's a few of these, these on here that, they don't have the totals on the bottom. They're not totaled up. So can we make sure that's totaled in the future there? Just, there's a lot of it's just handwritten stuff that they didn't.
Handwritten.
I'd appreciate it. It's much easier to see.
Yep, nope, we can work on it. There'll be redesigning, you know, these.
Yeah, getting that. What do you need for that? What's the, you need some new, different program or whatever to get it so you're not hand entering all of this stuff?
It's a, we have to look at the formatting, change the formatting. So if we wanted to be able to have it be generated by the computer.
Right. So that we have, we can get the totals expended up to date before we do it, not from the end of November.
At the end of November, yes, but we have to just work into all of that.
But I mean, is there a cost to that or is it just?
No, the system does it. We can do, do a printout, but we just can't get it in this format and you may, you won't be able to see all the years. It will do currently what we've done, but you won't be able to see, you know, the years before if we do it by the computer. And then, you know, we just have to tweak the columns to figure out how to get the columns, what the department head wants.
And big enough where we can still read it?
And big enough so you can still read it, yes.
Yeah. Going to have to start getting bigger every year, I think.
You know, I mean, you kind of figure out how many years you want to look back at to see, you know, how many columns you want them to fill out, you know. Is it just their department? Do you still want to see three columns of funding levels? You know, those are all decisions and that impacts, you know, how big the print is.
Yeah, how much room you have on the form and the more stuff you put in, the smaller the letters and the font is going to.
Yeah, we don't want people to go, you know, we don't want them to be upset because they can't see it.
Well, Ron, we could, we could start handing out magnifying glasses with, with the books. We're taped to the front of the book.
Or just a sheet that's bigger so you can just put the whole thing out in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Little three ring gizmo.
Right, that just goes over it and the whole thing just shoots right out. Mowgli, work on that.
Yeah, I'm on it.
All right, I guess we're done with this one.
All right, and then the computer IT. We are asking for a small increase in these hardware, software maintenance to, you know, cover any additional cost on our maintenance agreements. We, Doug and I and Jim, you know, put in our grant for an IT for a virtual server which we were granted. The grant is going to fund $91,000, a little over $91,000 of the grant.
Congratulations.
What paid for the virtual server, we have to pay, there was a part of it for the disaster recovery server that they went, they thought was a second project, so they wouldn't fund that part of it. So as the town went to, a little over $55,000 for that.
What is the virtual server?
That is a.
So.
Ladies terms?
Yeah, so today each of the departments and police, fire, assessor, town hall, they each have little bunches of computers all over the place at the fire department, police department, town hall here. We're going to consolidate that into a single unit. And basically you virtualize those servers and they run inside this one box. So they're, they basically become tenants to a singular box. It adds to the redundancy, so if there's a failure, the virtual machines can move to a different server. There's more than one in that little appliance thing. And it, it makes management of it easier. It's more cost effective long-term.
Reduces our points of access.
Going to need a new building for it?
No, it's actually going to go, it's actually going to save space. It's going to go in the police department.
Good.
It's.
Okay, okay.
It's tiny. It's tiny. It's smaller than a file cabinet.
Minuturation is great.
Right.
Minuturation.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
And we have to, you have to see it to understand. Took me, he had to explain it about six times. Show me.
So our $34,000 is our part of a.
A much larger project to look at that, right.
It was a $140,000 application.
Yeah.
And it was year two. Year one was a cybersecurity assessment, a $5,000 grant through the executive office of technology systems or something like that. And this is all under the governor and the lieutenant governor's community compact program to allow communities to say, this is what's important for us. And they help you customize an agreement and they support what you're doing at the local level. So.
Yep, yep.
The lieutenant governor, Polito, came out here for this stuff. So this is an important initiative for them and they're continuing the program. And when you work with the people who run the program and they, and you take their advice and you negotiate with them, then they're more apt to approve your funding for the subsequent steps. And that's exactly what we did. We have a great rapport with them and we're getting money to come in to help us fix things.
True.
But we need to leverage it with local shares.
It's also moved some money from other departments into this budget. So there's like a police server that's not being bought. There's a switch at the fire department that's not being bought by the fire department. It's all, so the money shows up here.
Yep.
And then this is a critical year too. There's, there was two servers here that were identified as being way out of date security wise. And then also in this town hall budget, operating systems and versions of office that have reached end of life and end of support that need to be moved. So they're undertaking that project totally.
Sounds very good. Sounds like a very good effort.
Yeah, so, you know, so we've asked, you know, for money, you know, to set aside for, you know, our portion, you know, part of that is a managed, is the term.
Yeah, so.
Managed.
Managed services. So part of this is that there had been talk in previous years about looking at having somebody coercively manage, internally manage the IT infrastructure as this stuff gets a little more complex. It's just too expensive for the town. So they're looking at potentially outsourcing that and hiring a managed service provider on a, on a contractual basis for a fixed fee to bring that certain number of hours per week or month to do that management and also to be like on call. So this stuff will actually call them and say, this is broke, fix that type of thing.
I mean, right now we're structured where we have, you know, like a network technician, which is a union contract position. And that's fine to do a certain level of activities, like the bottom 25 to 30%. But now that, you know, technology's exploding and we have to be, look at it from a comprehensive point of view, it's either we stop migrating over toward like an IT director and then you get into that type of a person, their staff and all their direct and indirect costs, everything, pensions, OPEC and all that. We don't really need to do that. What we need is, we need a service in place where when we need it, we get what we need and when we don't need it, we, we don't need to be billed for it like a sunk cost. So that's what a lot of businesses are running for their platforms now. They're not doing it in-house. They're going to other companies that that's all they do.
Right.
So, so when we're going through this budget process here, we may be fine tuning the numbers she just gave you on the admin expense and all that. And for these, these other contractual services, we may end up adjusting that to reflect more resources needed for a contract for a managed service provider. So I just want to be clear, this is not a finished product. This is where we are now with this step and tie. But it is something we have to do so that we can also give support to our police and fire staffs because what's happening now is they used to just have somebody that, the police chief would just say, oh, so-and-so, under my right of assignment authority, you're in charge of this. And it's like, you know, it worked for a while, but with all these other things going on, the chiefs recognize that they really want to have this MSP approach as well as all the work we're doing under this grant program because they really want more of those IOAs to be brought back in for police related business instead of having police officers doing all this other admin and software and all this other stuff in a back room. They really want them out in the vehicles or doing law enforcement activities.
Right, and they will need a drone technician.
Well, we'll, we'll have to.
Bazinga.
We'll get to that.
You know, that's something where maybe when we need a drone, we have an outsource contract for that too.
Yeah. And, and lastly, one of the, there was with DPW for the last several years since they moved to our lovely facility down the street, there's been talk about having people where they should be and shouldn't be and.
Go ahead.
But anyway, so part of this, this IT infrastructure grant is DPW will now be connected to this network here. So DPW has files and work and stuff that they have here that they don't have access to there. They have stuff there that's not being backed up that it is here. This will make it seamless. It will also be, we call it disaster recovery. If something were to happen at the police department that the building was inaccessible, all the IT stuff for the town will actually be at DPW as a backup.
But the, but police also has stuff over and wants police.
But that's, yeah, that's already there.
They have other, they have other arrangements for their criminal and all that other stuff.
Right.
It's in another secured law enforcement building.
Yep, okay. Well, I'm glad I'm getting this explanation because I, these numbers did concern me looking at them. And again, you know, looking closer, seeing that some of this is not covered by the grant, but some, you know, a lot of this stuff is covered by the grant.
Oh, 75%.
When you start adding these numbers up there, it did get a little scary.
No, no, she, that was, she had to differentiate what was within the.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm just saying, that's why I'm here.
You know.
Here's what that's going on.
We have to, that's documents that we have to supply the state. Now, they already gave us the money, right?
We've already got.
Right, we already have a signed contract. The money already came in.
It's here and we just need to.
So we're off and running. We're already partnering with our, our outside state approved contractors and vendors and, you know, we're just, it's like everything else. We're just running every day.
Yeah, and then we, you know, and then we have to make sure that there's, you know, fiber connectivity between here, you know, so we're still working on if there's, you know.
Yeah.
Whether it's running in, whether, you know, how much money we need to.
Yeah, there is the issue of this building connecting this building to the, you know, because if we're all going to be tenants of each other, we have to make sure we have connectivity. We do have the conduits here, but we may have to run some fiber lines between the buildings. And we have Valley getting us quotes on that stuff too.
The hardest part of this whole project once, was no, was getting police and fire and DPW and the assessor in a room and all agree that they could play on the same ball field, right? I think that was the most important part of this project. And once they realized the value that it's going to bring and the time it's going to save all those departments and money, that they were all for it, especially the police and fire, because they, they really were, you know, but they've done a magnificent job of working together on this.
They didn't want, they didn't have to have separate file service that everybody could have, could be tenants within a larger system that was partitioned off and secured.
Yep.
And that's, that's, that's a natural thing in any public safety environment where they just don't want to be connected to anybody.
Right.
Yep.
You know, and with the Windows 7, due to the retired software in January of 20, we just made a plan to upgrade the operating systems of our current computers. So we've added in money for that so that we can stay secure once seven goes obsolete. So that's the 11,000. And, you know, some of that we will, when we're buying new computers, we'll make sure that we have Windows 10 in it and then for the older ones, because we don't want to replace all the computers all at once, you know, it's cheaper to do the Windows 10 and then, and then the upgrade for Office 365. And we're asking for money for that, get everybody on the same platform because, you know, everybody's, you know, different levels and complaints. They can't run.
Comcast is making everybody do that, anybody, even their business clients, even their residential clients. Everybody had to do that, even with your home Comcast.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions, guys?
One comment.
Comment, please.
Real quick comment. You know, I remember when Southwood first started computerizing.
Code Gebeck?
Code Gebeck. And the mistakes we made and the cost and the headaches. We are so fortunate to have Doug Mowgli here to assist us. You have, you have done a tremendous job. I just want to thank you. He's got that face for radio.
You are right, though. This is a huge headache if you don't have any kind of.
And I remember the nightmare we had.
So many talks by the board too. He's working on so.
But.
Just a clerk.
Just a clerk.
A hell of a clerk. Big shoes to fill.
I'm just the clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lord. Great job.
Break, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, let's do Lake Management. They're not here. They got nothing next.
Good, no budget.
All right. We'll take a break.
Cut it.
Okay, FY '20 budget hearings resuming. It's 9:20 and we have the Lake Management Committee appearing before the Joint Boards of Selectment and Finance Committee.
Good morning, folks. How you doing today? Wonderful. You guys can begin.
All right. Well, pretty much the first page, we stayed kind of status quo, gave you the plus minus 5%, you know, and no, no big surprises there, I don't think, unless anybody else has a question. Our telephone bill keeps climbing. We're going to try and do something about that. We're working actually to eliminate a phone at the south ramp with a radio link to the north ramp. Charlie Dunlap and Company and us are trying to eliminate that DSL connection, which will save a lot of money because it's marginal at best. And so that, we're looking, you know, hopefully to the future and make that go down. And the buoys and moorings and all that stuff are pretty much constant.
What's the, what's the craft behind the fire department that I see every once in a while? Is that the old buoys and moorings?
No, those are all. No, those are, all the buoys are stored there.
That's how they're stored?
And there are some old ones there and we just got our new, we get four every year because there's twenty-five buoys out there. They last about.
And you're right, I don't see them in the summer, I see them, you're right.
Right.
Yeah, all of a sudden, I'm like, where did those come from? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So what we, what we want to do is, the original ones, just to let you know, the first ones we had were the nine-inch round and those don't take a hit by a, by a bullet, but that's all we could afford at the time. So now we've gone, we standardized on those big ones. Well, we learned because the original big ones had this big, had a pole with a weight on the bottom and those are nasty to handle. So now they have nice ones that, the ballast for them is in the base of the buoy so you don't have anything sticking down, much easier to handle for us.
Right.
Because we're all volunteers. And so bit by bit, we're down, I think this year we end the use of any of the ones with the long stem.
Great.
And they're the ones that are beaten to hell because they've been out in the water, a lot of these have been out in the water for, you know, eight to ten years.
Okay.
And a few get hit every year, unfortunately. Uh, so, yeah, I already explained, we're working on this, uh, the camera down at the, at the weir gates, that's another thing Charlie is working on with us is to have a radio communication from, basically when we get done, the intent is to have radio from the weir gates to the north ramp visitor center and from the south ramp to the north ramp visitor center. So we eliminate, uh, wires.
Good.
And next one is, we have fifteen cameras in our, you know, security cameras and each year we need to replace about three. That's about, they're about five years if they last. Uh, you know, you get one that may get destroyed or something, you know, weather takes it out. So that's pretty much standard. And the next sheet, I just expanded that to show each year. And then interspersed in there is to replace a DVR because the DVRs again are similar thing. As the cameras get better and better, there's more pixels, therefore the, the DVRs have to have a greater capacity. We used to have a, a five hundred meg, it went to a terabyte, you know, so many gig, so many terabyte, now we're up to two terabyte DVRs. So you can have about, uh, three months' worth of data on them. And they pay for themselves many times now, by the way. Uh, nothing in staffing for the, for the ramps other, because we're all, uh, that's all self-supporting. The next one is lake restoration and, you know, stop me if somebody has questions along the way. Uh, and basically same, same budget, uh, we've added a little bit in the sample testing, uh, sorry, in the weed control. That offset is because the CRC will pay for the weed treatment, but they don't want to pay for the, all the other assessment work that we do. They're third, because they don't make a lot of money like they used to. They used to have some really good sponsors and where they'd have, you know, ten, fifteen thousand dollars in the bank every year, no more. So you've got to find a rich uncle.
Yeah.
Need that for North Pond.
Very rich uncle.
Very rich uncle.
That uncle has to die.
Two bottom line items below the Cognon alum treatment, you probably have seen, some, or some of you have probably seen the paperwork that's flying back and forth. We've got it down now to six hundred, roughly six hundred thousand. We actually have bids that have been received. Uh, that, we're trying desperately to get out of the state. I don't think the town should pay for that because it's a great pond. Uh, you know, they control the water, they own the water and damn it, pay for it.
Yeah.
So, uh, I just sent another volley of emails to everybody that had one before in the State House, probably all over the walls in the State House, that now we only need six hundred. So anybody, any help, you know, bring the bear on this. Got any other friends? Call them, please.
No rich uncles.
Uh, no, no, I mean, in the.
No, I understood, understood.
Yeah, great. And then the canal dredging, design and permitting, that's next. If we can get the money that was there originally, uh, that's in the bond bill, it'll cover that. So then, uh, the last, well, canal, uh, design dredging permitting, uh, one of the things that we have done is this, once we treat with alum, which you'll hear more about, that isn't end of task. So the very last sheet in this Form Four, there's two million, two million, two million. That's not to come from the town, we're not asking for that. That's because the alum treatment will take care of the deep areas, but there's muck in the coves and in the shallow areas that's loaded with phosphorus. And it does no good whatsoever to treat that with alum because the wave action, the boats and everything else stir it all. So the only way you can get it out of there is suck it out, hydro suction it, take it away. So that's what that is. And that represents, I did a map and I show all the areas and I broke it up into first priority, second priority, third priority into two million, three, two million dollar chunks. So we'll be looking to the state for six million dollars over a period of years.
I can answer more questions on that.
Yeah, as we go into that.
Well, let me, uh, let me go back to the alum, the half, uh, six hundred thousand.
Yep.
I know when you were before us, before you said that, uh, you were going to a meeting, uh, with the guys from the state. I mean, what is the, what's the real percentage of us actually getting that from the state? Um, and especially because you need it when soon as the light, or as soon as the ice comes out.
We're either going to do it this year, April, or it'll be forced to next year, April. It needs to be done in April.
Right.
And if they can't break it loose, with like a force account, if they can't break it loose by, for this April, then we're going to have to put it off and deal with, uh, which we'll talk a lot more here, with the, uh, algae blooms and, and treating it with copper sulfate.
And still the possibility of lakes being completely shut down.
It's still possible, yes, yes. So that's why I say if anybody's got any connections, I have emailed beyond our own legislators, our area legislators who I know from meetings at PVPC, that, those meetings and ones that we used to be are, you know, like Mike Knafick and Rick Sullivan and whatnot, I've gone to each one to try and help. And so anybody that knows anybody there, please, need all the help we can get. So, and, and a lot, like I said, there's a lot of dredging items in here, Canal Brook and whatnot, and some of these will look at other grants. Canal Brook may lend itself nicely to federal money, by the way, because this was part of an intercoastal waterway system. So I have made some inroads at Army Corps of Engineers and am going to continue down that path and see if we can get money from them, get them to actually do it. Because it, it doesn't end at the Connecticut line, by the way. You know, dredging to Connecticut line leaves a wall of crap south of that. So we really need to get into Connecticut too.
Canal Brook.
Yeah. And then eventually, uh, the other one for Army Corps is Great Brook. Great Brook is a disaster area. As we all know, it's, uh, you know, it takes Pearl Brook and Johnson Brook and all come into that confluence and everything gets flooded every year. So that's another one, that's an Army Corps job too. Anybody else have any questions on our budget? Because then we could take you quickly through the, you know, what's driving all this.
Right.
And, uh, please feel free to speed me up or slow me down or whatever you like. So if we go to the sheet that says outlines, so, uh, some of, a lot of you folks already know this, so, so in those areas, I can probably go faster, just sort of a review of what we're doing. I'll talk very briefly about the natural seasonal cycle, just to remind people, and then activities this year and conditions summary, um, and, uh, and the grant applications and then the phosphorus remediation plan, that's the, that's the alum stuff. So if we jump to where it says work qualities, so it's what we're continuing to do, so monitoring, so we do, uh, water measurements, uh, measurements of the water chemistry versus depth in all three basins.
That's a lot of volunteer stuff.
Yeah, and that's, and water sampling at the surface and depth and then have lab evaluations done. So that's, uh, the physical work of doing all that stuff is Rick Wylott and I, we, we take all the samples and then I do all the data analysis. Um, and then we have an outside limnologist who overlooks, oversees things to make sure that we're doing things the right way. Um, actually, he's, uh, uh, really likes our data and says we have, we have better data than they get from places that, that pay people or do data. Uh, and then management basically is analyzing that data and doing ongoing reporting in conditions and be able to drive rapid decision-making for management of algae blooms. And that's a, that's a big deal. And then this data sets the stage to enable us to do the alum treatment. We basically have the data we need. Without this data, if we wanted to do an alum treatment, there'd be a state study that would have to happen before, even after the funding. We don't need that. Our data's good enough that, that they'll take what we've got.
Yeah.
And, uh, and just, you know, also we've done oxygen demand measurements for the lake, which is the best that was ever done for these lakes. Uh, and we did bottom sampling, coring, a few years ago, which again is critical for this, and stormwater sampling. Uh, and of course, we're looking for funding, as we talked about, for canal and phosphorus. So if we go to the natural seasonal cycle, uh, I think a lot of you have seen this before so I don't want to bore you with it. Uh, the, the idea, the idea to keep in mind, the takeaway thoughts is that in the beginning of the year, uh, right when the ice goes out, the water is fairly, the water chemistry and temperature is fairly constant from the bottom to the top. But as part of the natural seasonal cycle, as the, as the sun heats the lake up, what you wind up with is a stratification where there's an upper layer and a lower layer and there, and it's a natural thing, it happens at all lakes. And where you've got the upper layer that's been heated up by the sun, the lower layer is cold and between those is a thing called the thermocline, a thermal barrier. And actually, there's very little mixing between the top and the bottom. And in our lakes, because of the, this is not because there are people living here, it's because we've got a fourteen thousand-year-old lake, okay? This is, these are glacial. Uh, and what, what's happened is that that lower layer is depleted of oxygen. And so, so if you see people in the middle of the summer out there fishing in the bottom of the lake, they're not going to catch anything, there's nothing down there.
Dead fish.
In the winter you can, but in the summer you're not getting anything that way. Uh, but, um, but the bigger issue is that there are algae and what are called cyanobacteria that thrive in that low oxygen environment. And what happens is that they grow and live down there and all of a sudden you can get a bloom where they pop through the thermocline. And when that happens, it's staggering how fast. I mean, it can be, you know, one example we had a couple of years ago, the bloom went from the first spotting anybody had right after I finished skiing at about eight in the morning, in twenty-two hours, all of South Pond was covered.
Wow. It's green slime.
It's unbelievable how fast. And if, and, uh, so then it becomes, you know, not usable, not safe. But the other issue is if the counts, if the biological counts get over a certain number, we are not permitted to treat. Massachusetts handles it differently from other states. And if you have a, a bacteria that can generate a toxin and you're over seventy-two thousand counts, you're not allowed to treat, which basically means if that happens, the lake's shut down for the season. So it's a, it's a really big rule when that happens. So you have to be Johnny on the spot. So. Stupid question. Yeah. If somebody is like trolling, you know, the bottom of the lake with a treble hook or something and pull, starts pulling some, stuff up from the bottom, is that potential, is it not enough to do anything? No, that's not enough to, to cause a bloom. It's a good question. It's not enough to cause a bloom, certainly, yeah, they're pulling stuff up. I mean, we do sampling. Yeah. You know, we do sampling. So you're the cause.
Yeah, right, absolutely.
Yeah, we do sampling at least monthly. And I'll tell you, if you come out on the boat, what, once the thermocline forms, when you take the sample from the surface, oh, you take that sample, you take the sample from the bottom, you put it in the bottle like.
Yes, reeks.
Oh, you know, it's like, it's not subtle, you don't, you don't need to do an assay to go, well, that's not so good. Okay, so again, we do regular monitoring, so depth profiles now monthly, we were doing it every two weeks, now we have the data enough to do it monthly. And daily, actually almost every day, we're taking turbidity and chlorophyll readings in South Pond. Uh, that's Rick Wylott going off the end of his dock, sending me that, texting me that data every morning. So that's, that's part of how we stay on it. So algae bloom management or cyanobacteria bloom management, we had two blooms that needed to be treated this year. That's bad. Uh, the first bloom was in July, was dominated by something we've seen before. Uh, we treated on the seventeenth of July, that was within four days of initial detection. So part of that, there's two things that enable us to do that, or three things really. One thing is we're vigilant, we're watching all the time and we have communication channels for this stuff where I can get data even when I'm in Europe, which I am often. So there's that aspect. The next aspect is the decision process in the town is now just lickety-split. Everybody knows their role, everybody knows what needs to be done, boom, 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 we make the decision. And the third piece is when we put the new contract in place with Solitude, we put in there a clause that they, we understand you've got a lot of customers, they sign a thing saying they will respond to us in a maximal of three days.
Right.
So somebody else's lake may be closed, but it may be ours, so.
And they've done that, by the way.
Yeah, and we actually had to remind them on the last one.
Yeah.
Because they came back with a, well, we can come next Tuesday, we're going, eh, there's a clause, three day. Oh, yeah, you're right, we'll be there.
Well done.
And it's critical, it really is.
Well done.
So the second bloom was a, was an unusual type that we hadn't seen here before called plankatrix, nasty stuff. And, uh, I won't bore you unless you want it, the details, but this was sort of coming and going where it appeared it was a big problem and then it faded and it came and faded. And so we didn't treat right away because you don't want to treat too often. You can create other problems with overtreatment. So we watched it, but it didn't, what happened as we were taking the data and watching the oscillations is it didn't get better over time, each time it was getting a little bit worse. And so after we saw that, we're like, we had about four or five days, we went, no, it's got to be treated. Uh, but again, we're, we're very cautious, we don't, we don't just go off and go, hey, we see something, let's treat it. We're very cautious about that. Then we had a third bloom that started in late September. Luckily, it started late enough that the weather got it and we did not have to treat for that. If I look at twenty eighteen conditions, the clarity was actually a little better than usual during the peak season. And we think basically there's two drivers of this. One is we did two algae treatments, which kills off a lot of the stuff that causes the water to not look so good. And last summer again, we had moderate consistent rain. Almost every week, we had a half an inch to an inch of rain almost every single week. That enables us to maintain a flow, whereas a lot of years, we can't flow. We have to shut it off or the, you know, the lake will drain down. And so, so the water basically has a long detention time and that's not good. So Mother Nature was kind to us with the rain we had. Uh, and here, this is more something you can go back to if you want to, this is something else we look at all the time, the, you know, what is the lake level versus the day of the year? Um, and you can see, you know, times where we had, uh, very high water where we had to close the lakes. Again, once we're over a certain level, we have to close the lakes to boating because it, it puts people's property at risk and especially septic systems. Once the water gets over a certain level, because we've got some septic systems that aren't that high above the water.
Water and Connecticut.
So, so, um, and, and the weir gates have helped us to manage this a lot better, but, um, but it's, it's still something that requires a pretty active management. One thing is because we have this data now, we can also respond because we'll get, we'll get pings from, uh, from citizens who say, hey, the water's high, the water's low, and we can kind of tell them, well, you know, it's within the normal band or no, it's not. Okay, grant applications. Uh, you already talked about the S three nineteen funding for canal restoration and then the, the thing I really want to hit is the, is the one after this. Our original estimate for the, for the alum was going to be about eight hundred fifty K all in, looks like all in is now more like six hundred, which I'll hit on the last page.
There are a couple of drivers to that, by the way, is the, the proximity of the one that makes the aluminum sulfate and it is now in the, in Western Mass, there's a good supplier, and the other one is competition. There's, have, uh, came, uh, actually bid. good supplier. And the other one is competition. There's HAB came, actually bid this project. There were only difference of what, 50, about 50K?
Yeah, well, it's, it's not even, it's right in there, it's 30K.
30K.
So basically, we sent out an RFP, and on 2/11, we got two proposals, which we received and opened on the 26th. And here's the numbers for those two. With regard to the competition commentary, our lumenologist, who's running lots of these projects in multiple states, says, yeah, every place where HAB has come in, the prices for the treatments have dropped. You know, and he's been around long enough to go, yep, yep, here's where they came in, yeah, and then the prices went down. So, so that's, that's been good for us. So, we need that. And then about 33K for official project oversight, monitoring and regulatory reporting, there are requirements for this. We can take a lot of the data, but we're, we don't have the legal status to produce the documentation that's required. So we're basically saying, plan on 600K. You know, assuming Solitude is that we take, that would be 516K, 33K for the oversight. We're saying, put in about a 10% contingency because stuff happens.
And that would be Ken Wagner?
Yes.
Ken Wagner, yes.
Yeah, that's Water Resources Services, is Ken Wagner, yeah. We are looking for an April 1 start date, April 1st, basically after ice out. And really what we need to get is a commitment from the state for the 600K. That's, that's the big deal. We can do that.
One good thing about having Ken is that he is literally recognized in the Commonwealth, you just mentioned his name, and he is so well-known. But he is, he's basically works from east coast to west coast. And we were lucky to get him because he finished up a project, big project in Minnesota, and one in California. And before that, he had said no, because he was traveling too much. And he says, I really want to retire. And we convinced him to, it's the data that got him. He's a scientist, that's my training.
Well, he helped, he helped bond council for the term on this, you know, this was going to be bonded, you know, so...
Right.
His documentation was very helpful to me.
Yeah, we're, we're very fortunate. An interesting thing, in, in my, my professional life, I'm doing a lot of work in Europe now. We have a lot of sites in Europe, including in Scandinavia. And the Scandinavian countries are having the exact problems we're having because they, their lakes, they have tons of them, and they're all old like ours, 14,000-year-old glacial lakes. And they're all having the same problems, but they're doing lots of phosphorus remediation. And actually, it was funny, because I'm there having dinner with these guys in Finland, and the guy goes, yeah, they just did that at my lake, two years ago, and it's fantastic. And he was showing me pictures on his cellphone.
Before and after.
You know, of what a great job it did. So it was really interesting, discussing it over dinner. And he's like, oh, yeah. And so, so they, you know, they're dealing with it on a large scale. Any questions?
Like usual, it's a great, great...
Not a new subject.
Great report, and thank you for all your volunteering.
Thank you, guys.
Take care.
Take care.
So we're going to skip DPW this year?
Randy, see ya.
Oh.
Right on time this year, it's nice.
Nothing new going on, right?
Right on time, Randy.
Yeah, I don't know what I was going to say, but nothing new, yeah.
Yeah.
Like I said, let's skip Randy this year.
I thought you had that one.
I wasn't thinking. I'm a little off my game. These midnight meetings here are really...
You know, you keep telling me, you keep telling me to stop these midnight meetings.
These are hard, it's hard to get up.
I keep telling you, what country are you in right now? What clock are you?
Retirement clock.
You want the mish clock?
Retirement clock.
I don't have one for...
It's coming the other way. I, I think it's coming that way.
If I give, if I say one, okay, there's more coming.
I have more here too, for Bob and the woman.
I, I put them in here already.
He's getting up, but... You get extra credit for coming all by yourself.
Uh-oh.
Steve Shielder.
Oh, oh.
Mr. Chairman. Nobody, nobody.
You got one more, or no?
No, she's got one, right?
Nope, we got it.
We're good. I got one here.
Yeah, you got an extra one, I got it. Yeah, I, I need one. Thank you.
All right. So I know I've got a lot of items to talk to you about tonight. I don't know how you want to handle it. I know you have your budget sheets based on division. I have several divisions. I have the spreadsheet, which kind of summarizes all of the major changes and the big-ticket items to the budget. Do you want to go one line item at a time, or one division at a time, and I'll refer back to this document here? Or do you want to go through this document? Does it, does it matter to you?
I think it'd be better. This was very thorough, Randy. That's, that'd be my opinion.
Yeah, this is fine. This is really what I want to talk about anyways, what's in this document. So the way I broke this up is the first two pages is kind of like a summary of all the, the changes and the big-ticket items to the budget. The next eight pages are a little bit more detail on each of those line items. And then, and in the back, there are some backup photos and documentation to support some of these items. And they're all numbered, so you can refer to, refer to them as we go through. All right, so starting off with the highway department, just a few things this year. I'll start off with the first item, conference travel education. I'm looking to increase that line item by $1,500 to $6,000. We do have a, a membership through the Connecticut Valley, our Connecticut River Stormwater Committee. Those stormwater fees are going up this year. We do have a stormwater permit that's in effect. We've all talked about this in the past. But really is to support our, our, our membership into that Connecticut River Stormwater Committee. That's the, the main reason for that increase. The next line, line item is for pipeline inspections. This is something that we don't do a whole lot of, but I'd like to do more. This is to send a camera up mostly to drain lines. We do have a lot of drainage systems in town that are old, deteriorated. They need, need to be replaced. But what this allows to do is to TV inspect those pipelines. We'll hire that, that contract out to a local vendor. And we can identify the type of repair, location repair, and that might minimize the amount of work we have to do to actually fix that location.
What type of pipeline is this?
Drainage.
Drainage.
Yes, yes. The next three items are carryovers from last year's paving, construction, and improvements. We use these for all kinds of paving, small, small, small-scale paving and drainage improvements. One attachment in your packet there is, is a list of a whole host of products we'd like to identify and tackle. Not really nearly going to get all those products done with this amount of funding, but you know, if we can tackle three, four of them a year, that, that's our goal. So we want to continue those, those projects. A lot of our drainage issues, there's flooding to road, flooding in roads, flooding to private property, things that we can do to eliminate that, those issues.
Randy, can I ask you, are they in order of how you would like to see them addressed, or not really?
On attachment one?
Yes.
Yes, they are.
Okay.
That's why I was planning on tacking them, yeah. We've already started the...
Thank you.
Yes, yep, that's in order.
Okay.
So the next handful of items here, from Cedar Street drainage, all the way to sidewalks, the end of the highway items, this is all part of a, a larger capital plan, which I submitted to both income and, and select board about a month and a half ago. It was a, it was a long-term, six-year paving and infrastructure improvement program. Don't need to drive around town roads and notice, notice that they're falling apart. This year in particular, you know, this time of year in particular is when you see it the worst. Potholes are forming. It's not fun, not fun for us, not fun for you. And, and we're getting to a point where, we're getting, we're at a breaking point, where if we don't start putting money into our road network, we're going to really, we're going to fall far, way behind. The, the program I, I pulled together was, it was a six-year plan, $3 million a year. So $18 million program total, from start to finish. I, I know in the past we're having some preliminary discussions between both boards, maybe potentially funding this through, through a bond, or some other agency, other, other, other funding source. I'd like to see those conversations continue. And if anyone that can help out to, you know, as you, you talk about those, I, I would appreciate that. I'll just go through these projects in particular, which are the, the year one of that six-year program. And many of these, we talked about in the past. The first item is Cedar Street and Bondi View Road Drainage. This is a neighborhood where the drainage is completely deteriorated. There's some pictures in your packet showing the pipe, the bottom of pipe is, is, is all, is all deteriorated. What's happening is we have sinkholes that form when the water runs to the pipe, washes out all the dirt, and then it causes the sinkholes to form in there. So, it's an area that we're always tackling sinkholes. And sinkholes obviously are safety, safety concern. Fred Jackson Road Culvert Placement, about six, seven years ago, the town designed three culverts. This was one of them. We constructed one culvert two years ago on South, North, South, well, South Wumus Street. We are going up, we just went up to bid for the second culvert on Granville Road, and that will be under construction this year. And this is the third of those, those three culverts that do need to be replaced. We do have several other culverts in town that, once this gets done, we'll tackle those. They're all part of the six-year plan. But you can see the number, you know, they're obviously not, it's not a cheap venture to, to tackle just one culvert.
Randy, we just opened up the bids the other day.
Yep.
And it went up to, what, did it want to go up to six, seven, 900 even?
So the range of bids for Granville Road was $360,000 to $940,000.
Seven bids, six bids?
Seven bidders, yeah.
Ridiculous. Wow, ridiculous. Just Granville Road, just a cross-section of Granville Road up near Hastings and Klein and Fred Jackson. It's, it's, the permitting requirements, the design requirements are out of control.
We already done the design now, right?
Oh, yeah, but still, you have to, you have to pay all this extra money. So you paid quite a bit for design, but now you then have to carry that design outward in terms of how you build it.
Not just putting a pipeline around anymore. So you got to meet all these current standards, the wet pipe, it's, it's, it is, it is very complex. The next item, Granville Road, TIP design. So, this is to kick off another project like we are undertaking right now on Congamon Road, and we finished on Feeding Hill Road last year. Both those projects were done through, through TIP dollars, which is federal and state dollars. The way the program works is the town has to initiate the design, pay for the design efforts and permitting, and then the state pays for the construction. So for Congamon Road, I think we paid $400,000, $500,000 in, in design fees, and, and the state paid for the $4 million of construction. So, from a, to an investment, to get a, get a nice project done at the end of the day.
What portion of Granville Road are you referring to here specifically?
This, ultimately, we'd want to do the entire road. I would, I would start from, from center town to Fred Jackson Road, Klein Road, that, that area, which is about halfway down. Next road on the list is Nicholson Hill Road. So about, I think five, I think 2011, 2012, the town paved most of Nicholson Hill Road. Up to the top of the hill, there's about 800-foot section of road that was not paved. So I'd like to move forward with that project, call it Phase Two. There are some wetland issues that need to be addressed. So when that first project was initially designed and permitted through Conservation Commission, there were some wetland impacts on the section of road that was paved. But in order to mitigate those wetland impacts, you have to create new wetlands on the section of road that was not paved. So that, that, the wetland recreation was, was never built. So, we have an order of conditions through Conservation Commission, which ties us to finish that work. We did get an extension on the order of conditions. I think that extension runs out in 2021. There is a letter in your package from Conservation reminding us of our responsibility to, to complete that project. That's Nicholson Hill Road. The next four items, I'll just lump these into one, one discussion here, North Longeville Road, Robin Road, South Wumus Street, and Tanrey Road. These roads are all in a very poor condition. I would suggest, I urge all of you to go take a ride down these roads and gauge for yourself their condition. Imagine what they'd be like in two, three, four years if we don't take any action on these roads. They are falling apart. All these projects were identified through our pavement manager program, which is in your package, which identifies and prioritizes all these paving projects. And that was, that was where the basis of my, my six-year plan was at, that pavement manager program. The last two items here are crack ceiling sidewalks. These are things that we, well, crack ceiling we do every year. I'd like to continue that. That's probably the most cost-effective method to improve and maintain the condition of our roads. But you can only do crack ceiling on roads that are still in, in good condition, okay? Roads that are like the ones that sit here, you know, the crack ceiling's not going to do anything to it.
Randy, do you have any kind of thoughts on the, the process that was used on Foster Road and Honey Pot, Honey Pot Road?
Yes, so that was a, a Cape Seal, I think. It was a Cape Seal, or, no, Micro Seal. We did a Micro Seal a couple of years ago on a couple neighborhoods, similar to the Cape Seal on, it was a rubber, sorry, Chip Seal, a rubberized Chip Seal on those two roads.
So the, the process that, Foster Road was a little older.
Mm-hmm.
When that process was done on Foster Road. Honey Pot was only, what, a year old? When you, for two years since it was built?
Yeah, it's before his time it was. It was done...
Okay, but I just wondered if...
It had a second seal, like Reservoir Road.
Analysis of what was done then.
Reservoir Road had the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so again, those are all...
Born very well.
Techniques that, that are available to us, and I'd like to pursue those in the, in this six-year plan. If the road's in very poor condition, those techniques aren't going to work.
All right, I get it.
They have to be, they have to be with a certain range. There's a, there's a scale that we use, a zero to 100 scale, basically. A hundred is, you know, a brand-new road, zero is a road that probably looks like, you know, Robin Road. So, so there's a band in there where...
They're effective.
That is effective method, yes.
Okay.
And the intent of the program is to spend a little bit of money now doing the Chip Seals and the Micro Seals, as opposed to spending a lot of money down the road and having to replace and reconstruct all these, these roads.
Okay, not get too far in the weeds, but you also did something up on Laurel Ridge, didn't you?
That was a Micro Seal.
That was?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Any questions on highway? Moving on to road machinery. First item is uniforms. We do have a contract with the CINTAS for our uniforms for the highway, all, all the workers. I do expect that, that contract to be increased next year, so I accounted for a little bit of increase for that line item. The next four, four, few items are some schmish, schmish equipment we're looking to purchase. The first is a mini excavator. This is a machine that we don't have now, but this, this machine is a very useful tool, and it'll help us do more work in-house. Right now, we contract a lot of our paving projects, not paving, but you know, pipeline drainage-type projects. We coordinate that with a local contractor, Crestview Construction. They have the, this type of equipment. We don't have this, but if we have a machine like this, we can certainly do more of these projects in-house. You know, this mini excavator is really useful for working in tight, tight areas. It's very versatile, if you're working on embankments. You know, when we hire Crestview to do our projects, a lot of times they, almost always, they bring this machine on, on site. And we do pay about $800 a day for that machine. I would say that we hire Crestview to do four or five projects every, every year. Each product may be a day or two, or maybe a week. But I think, long-term, there will be certainly some savings if we could do those projects in-house.
But it also includes the operator. Crestview, that $800...
Yes, it does.
Includes the operator.
Yes.
So if you had this in the excavator, you'd still have to put an operator on there, in there, of your own.
We put our own, yeah, we put our own operators in there, yep.
Yeah.
And the $800, that, that is our current rate that we pay Crestview. Our contract expires at the end of this year, at the end of this fiscal year. I don't know where the number's going to be, we have to go up the bid. But I will tell you that the last time we went through this process, their rates went up about 30%. So that $800 may be a lot more in become June, July 1st.
Yeah, we are due to put that up to bid again.
It's a, it's a three-year contract. This is year three of that, that, that contract. The next item is a skid steer loader with a planer attachment. And this is going to help us do a lot of things. First of all, the skid steer loaders are very versatile. They have a lot of attachment options that go with it. And one that we're very interested in is the planer attachment. So we can buy a machine that can plane out a section of, of asphalt, two-foot wide section, mill it down to however deep we need. It could be up to four or five inches. And we can come back and put a more permanent fix on that location. So right now, we've got a lot of locations where we fix potholes just by putting asphalt in a hole. If we use this asphalt, this planer attachment, will give us, it'll give us a much more, much more cleaner repair, and much more, it'll, it'll last, it'll last longer as well. And then that kind of ties into the next item, which is this asphalt recycler. We did demonstration with a, a similar machine over the summer with a select board. This will allow us to, to produce hot mix all year long. And you know, this time, this time of year, all the asphalt plants are closed. So in order to fix a pothole, we have to buy coal patch. In the summer, in the summertime, we can buy hot mix. You know, the cost of coal patch is $110 a ton. The cost of hot mix is about $80, or $70 a ton. I think $69, $70. to seventy dollars a ton. We can make our own, we can make, make our own asphalt using this, this milling machine, which we talked about, and also using a pile of millings that we have at the transportation. And we can make our own mix for about twelve to fifteen dollars a ton, and save, save a lot of money that way. So again, I know this is an upfront cost, but I think there'll be some, certainly some long-term savings in that regard. And also allows to, to do more repairs more quickly, and I think we'll, we'll benefit from that.
Randy, that recycler would be replacing, don't we have a unit now?
We do not, no. We have what's called a hot box, which you may be thinking of.
You're thinking of the red trailer hot box.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a trailer. We use that, and we would still use that in conjunction with this recycler. So we would, this recycler would, would make some, make the mix. We would use that hot box to, to, you know, basically bring that mix around town and, and, and use it that way.
All right. So in the wintertime, we wouldn't be using coal patch?
No, I get it. I thought the, the little hot box, the red thing was capable of that.
It heats it up, but it doesn't, you can't create, you can't make mix. It just keeps it warm inside, so it's, it's workable. The next item is a tractor with mower attachments. So we have a nineteen ninety-five Toyota tractor that is pretty much done with. I've talked to you about this in the past. This tractor, what I'm looking to do is getting a mower attachment, which is, well, two mower attachments. One is a boom mower attachment, which is kind of like the, the arm mower over the guardrail doing embankments, and also another, a flail mower, which is a pull-behind mower. And this will allow us to do roadside mowing much more quickly. We do have another tractor that we do have the boom mower in, that does not have the flail mower on, and that one allow us, so this will allow us to do both the boom and the flail mower all in one, one pass, as opposed to having to go back with the separate passes for the mower attachments. We do use, do the rail trail with this machine, or I'd like to do the rail trail with this machine as well. Again, this will just help us do that work much more quickly. And like I said, our other tractor is, is regular by surplus this year. It's a ninety-five. We've had, put a lot of money into it for the past five years, and it's just, it's, it's, it's minutes, minutes life, it's, it's minutes life cycle.
Now, you were, I know that, that Capcom meeting, we'd asked you about looking into, like Bobcats that could?
Yes.
With attachments, that could do them in the excavator and the planer and maybe even the mower.
Yes, I'm glad you brought, I was gonna bring that up, yeah. So I did look into trying to find like a combo unit that would, that would accommodate all two or three of these machines, and I couldn't find one out there that was, that was suitable, so. And then other Terry question you had regarding the paving projects, you asked about the tree work? So you talked about taking some trees down in conjunction with the paving projects?
Right.
And in my numbers, I went back and I did, I checked, so in my numbers, I did account for tree work on locations where I thought tree, would, tree work would be necessary.
So it's included in your estimate?
It is included in the estimate, yes. So some streets don't need tree, tree work, tree removal, but others, there are, I would, I would suggest some, some tree work.
Good.
And that opens up the canopy. Once they get more sunlight, it just, you can drive downtown roads and, and you see where one section of roads in, in sun all day long, and then you go into a shaded area, the, the road condition's like night and day. The, the potholes are forming, and the shaded areas, areas in the sun are in much better condition. So we're always trying to open up the canopy, get more sunlight down on the roads and that will?
You know, I, I, I've been noticing northern trees in town lately, and, and it's kind of funny, they're in town during the winter as opposed to, usually you only see them during the spring or in the summer, and they're doing trees, but they've been out with details even during the winter cutting down trees.
It's a good time to cut down trees.
No, but, but I'm just saying, I, I'm not used to seeing them this time of year. Usually they're just doing storm damage. They're actually out doing preventive work.
Yeah, EverSource has been a really great partner with us over the past few years. You know, if we have a tree that's, you know, within town's right of way, but, you know, it also may impact their, their wires, their primaries, usually we'll reach out to them first and ask them if they'll, they'll take the tree at their cost. They don't always, but in a lot of, in many cases, they, they do, and so that'll save us from having to take that tree. So it's a good relationship we have with them, and I think they're in town now doing their work.
Yeah.
The last item on the road machinery is a vibratory roller. We've talked about this in the past. This is something that we would use when we're patching potholes and, and doing some drainage and paving projects. We have a roller now. It's a nineteen ninety machine, it's a nineteen ninety dinapack roller. It, the machine is obsolete. If we ever have to get any replacement parts, they have to be specially fabricated. The newer machines are heavier, they're more efficient. So again, that old roller would, would be surplus if we do get this new roller. Any questions on road machinery?
So, so the roller is just as important to have as the recycler. Those would be the two things you gotta sort of have together?
Uh, yeah, I mean, yes, yes. I mean, all, honestly, all of these kind of really tying together.
Yeah.
Yeah, they all, they all play a part in us, helping us to maintain our road network.
We, we said, we did a demo already with this recycler.
Yeah. Whose driveway got paved?
Uh, I think we passed?
Meadow Lane.
Meadow Lane, there was twelve?
It did look like a state job. There was thirty trucks out there between all of us, him, DPW, the police, everybody was there.
Everybody was out there with their, with these, putting it on Facebooks, saying, what's going on on Meadow Lane? We were just doing demos.
We, we filled one pothole.
Yeah. You found some bones?
There's all our public, you found some boulders.
The machine works as it's supposed to, right? It was a, it's a good idea.
All right, moving on to the second page. So engineering, what I did was, I talked to Lauren Fletcher, our town accountant, and we have some, some costs in engineering and also in solid waste that really don't fit the categories, the, the line item descriptions. So what, what I did is I, I didn't change the total number of the total dollars in engineering, but I reallocated, or I, I reallocated, I renamed some line items that kind of better suit our needs. So the first item is for office supplies. That's pretty self-explanatory. Traffic studies, these are things that we like to do every, every year if possible. Anytime we do some type of a grant program, or even like a culvert project, or paving project, it's good to have a traffic study involved. It just helps us understand the, the nature of the work, and it helps the contractors understand they can plan accordingly, you know, with their traffic controls. Software, this is, we do have some software that we purchase and maintain on an annual basis for AutoCAD and GIS programs and others. And then the last item is data plans. We do have some devices, tablets, that we do have a, a plan for through Verizon Wireless. This will pay for all those data plans. The next three items are for, are to address the, the NEPTI stormwater permit. We've talked about this in the past. This is a permit that's being administered through Mass DEP and EPA. And the permit is now in effect. It was in effect as of last July. So we're currently in year one of this, well, it's a five-year permit, but it's kind of extended beyond that. We did not get any funding to address the permit for this, this current year. So I am a little concerned how that's gonna be addressed when in DEP and EPA start reviewing our documents. We have to submit documentation every year in terms of what we do and, you know, what we don't do, that'd be pretty easy to pick up that we haven't done a whole lot. So this permit, I know it's controversial with some of you in here, it's not going away. Other towns are, are dealing with it, and we need to deal with it as well. So a couple items here. First item is stormwater mapping hosting. We have developed a stormwater map in conjunction with a grant we got through Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, but we need to have that, that, that stormwater map posted and maintained through Pioneer Valley Planning. This is to pay for that, that annual cost of that data hosting. The next item is to address all the permit items that are required in, in year one of that permit, hundred thousand dollars. There's a spreadsheet in your packet, identifies all the years and what the anticipated costs are. I won't go through that now, but for year one, we're looking at a hundred thousand dollars. And not only money, we need the time. We need time of town staff to address these items. You know, time that we don't have now between myself and Dick and Chris Supervisor. You know, we need a, a new position really dedicated towards the stormwater permit. And that would be nine to three hours a year, is what I'm asking for. That'd be, I think, eighteen hours a week, so a part-time position.
Do we have an idea what the salary rate might be in ballpark range?
I think last year we're talking in a range of twenty, twenty, twenty-five dollars an hour. Is that a starting point?
Are you looking for any volunteers to kind of help out with that at all too, or?
Yeah, we do, well, we have, we had interns the last two years, working, college interns and high school interns working with us. They did some, some great work helping us, us approve, but, you know, a volunteer can only do so much. You know, you need someone with some type of knowledge and background in stormwater systems to really address this permit. So certainly, an intern can be a part of the equation, but it's not, it's not the answer.
No, I wasn't saying it was the answer, just something to help out.
You volunteer?
I'm looking for some more things to do. He starts at noon, though.
Yeah. Well, Randy said it's halftime. And he quits.
About midnight, yeah.
About midnight meetings.
It's awesome. Should I stop and see you some?
Absolutely. We gotta fund it first, and then we'll talk about it.
I just wanna look.
Going back to the qualifications for this job, and we've talked about this in the past, all right, we've had interns doing certain things, but what kind of qualifications, a little bit, can we go a little deeper into that?
Sure. So there's, there's a whole host of tasks involved with this permit. It's not only looking at, it's not only like taking water samples, it's, it's looking at our bylaws. It's looking at town facilities and, and looking at, okay, where can we make improvements to the way we manage our, our vehicle fleet, the way we wash our vehicles? How the stormwater system, you know, is, are there issues with the stormwater system on that, on that site?
Okay.
So you need, you do need some, some knowledge and background in, in how, you know, stormwater systems and drainage, it all, it all works and plays together, and ultimately obviously goes out to our rivers and streams.
Okay. So the person would be not really an engineer, but somebody maybe an environmental scientist?
Yeah, I don't think you need to be an engineer or PE to, to handle this job. I don't think, most stormwater commanders or coordinators of other communities, I don't think they are PEs or engineers, but some type of a, a background, certainly, maybe, you know, some classes, you know, that they take on, on stormwater systems and that nature.
Right. And I think at one time when we had our, when we talked about a regional approach, if, if you had an opportunity and, and where you?
Want water?
Meet with your different groups about the possibility of sharing a regional person?
So a person, I don't think, I've talked to, like, with Westfield, they, they didn't seem to be amenable to their, sharing with their, their stormwater coordinator. But I think, I think the regional approach that one we have been taking is through the stormwater committee.
Okay.
And through Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. So we benefited from a number of grant opportunities. One is that stormwater mapping we've talked about earlier.
Yeah.
We did have a bylaw review done through Pioneer Valley Planning. A couple years ago through a regional, regional grant. So not just Southwood, but there were seven or ten other communities that were, that were part of it. So I, I, I'm hoping that there are more opportunities like that available, and certainly I would be pushing to join those, you know, and then to become, become available. But, you know, at this point, there's a lot, there's only so much that you can do regionally.
Right.
Right? A lot of this stuff, now that we're looking at individual sites and individual systems, you have to have somebody looking at each system individually, not globally, not, yeah, regionally.
But, I mean, this is something that Granville has to do also?
No, so it's based on population density. So, so unfortunately?
We're pretty dense here.
I would say that Southwood is probably one of the smaller communities in the state that are impacted by this permit. So there's only, so Granville, Talon, I mean, a lot of the Berkshire hill towns, they're not impacted. But you go to, you know, you go to greater Springfield area, Aglo, Westbrook Hill, I mean, all of those communities are part of the permit.
And has anybody, have we been talking at all about, what do they call them? Something zones, empire zones?
Enterprise zones.
Enterprise zones.
Enterprise, so a lot of other?
Funding this stuff?
Other, other communities have, have developed or are considering developing a stormwater utility, which you're referring to, which is a mechanism where, you know, basically mechanism to bring in revenue to pay for this permit. So we could, we could certainly consider a stormwater utility if you wanted to. I'd have to talk to you more about that. Or, or, you know, it would be funded through, just through the tenant general tax rate. The way other communities have done it is, there's, like, Westfield has a, basically a flat fee per residential property. I think it's twenty bucks a year. That's included, I think, with their tax bill. Other towns, like Northampton, they've done a more, I'd say, complex approach where they look at each property and they determine how much impervious area you have. So how, what's your roofline, how much paved, you know, what's your, how much paved driveways do you have? And that all is factored into the whole equation, and then that's, that's your percentage of, that's what calculates your fee. So there's, there's no approach to, to do that? You'd like to?
Yeah, well, I, I've, I've told you my feelings on this. Westfield's five dollars for a residence, and they hammered the businesses. Just literally hammered the businesses. You know, they're paying the, the lion's share of the whole thing.
Are they're doing, the businesses are, are they doing that by impervious surfaces?
Westfield, I, Westfield, it's a flat fee. I'm not sure about the businesses, though.
The business is, right, right.
I don't know if it's by square foot of impervious or just total square footage.
Right, I think it's total square footage, because they, they just came up with this thing, really, they didn't put a lot of, a lot of thought into it. I know the Chamber of Commerce was involved, 'cause I owned some property in Westfield, and, and they just came up with this arbitrary figure, you know? And I don't think it was right, and, and, and I think, and I've said to Randy before, and I've said to the board, is, we're too small a community. It's just like our tax rate. If we try to pack this onto the businesses, we're not gonna have any businesses in town, you know?
Not, not for a big degree, but again, it's some, it's gotta come out of somewhere, 'cause it's, you know, the state's like, ain't paying for it.
No, no, I, I think it's, but I think it's.
We're gonna have to pay for it at some point in time.
I think the, the community has to, this is a community situation.
And it's a hundred thousand a year, it's not like?
No, it's more than that.
Well, year one is the, the first nugget. I think the, the years two through five are, are much bigger impacts.
Yeah, Rick, we've, we've seen Randy's figures before, last year, and, you know, we're talking millions of dollars.
Yeah, by the time we're done.
You know?
Definitely. So, I mean, again, I paid the additional taxes, but if, if, if that's what we gotta do and what we can do, I, I know it's allowed now, but those enterprise things, so, you know, that's what it comes to, an extra twenty bucks or whatever per, per, uh, house?
It's gonna be a lot more than an extra twenty bucks.
Well, I don't know.
You know?
You just gotta back it. We have this, we have a, you know, singular tax rate, so I don't know how you would, you know, whether you take the budget number and divide it and figure out what that is on the tax rate, whether you do it as on the tax rate or you set up an enterprise and have a separate number, it's the same number, right? I think you get to it, so if it's, if it's twenty cents a thousand to fund it, just making up a number, or it's gonna be a separate line item on the bill of, that works out to be twenty cents a thousand, you know, that's how you get to the amount.
Right, but under municipal finance law, the issue is, if it's a fee, then that can be something that's in addition to what you're doing under the levy limit.
Agreed.
What's, what's the general number, uh, every million dollars?[1744.33]
Five bucks on the tax rate, that's the estimate.
That's about a buck.
Hundred, hundred thousands of dimes, so yeah, right.
Here a dime, there a dime.
Yeah.
That's a half.
Well, so that, I guess that's the difference, I, that's the key, thank you for that, because that's the key differentiator, right? If, if we say, okay, this is going to be twenty cents a thousand, and that would put us over the levy limit with the rest of the budget.
Yeah, because you
Carl's saying is you could set up enterprise, Ron. It's a fee, it's not a tax, but, and then you, it doesn't affect your levy limit.
It'd be a special revenue fund. We don't have any
Well, is it, is it time to be taken a serious, a more, uh, I'm not saying you haven't been serious about anything, but a more definitive look at a method to fund this?
Yes.
It's been told we're here.
Yeah, it's been for over a year, but, I mean, we were, yeah.
Yeah. So if we, is, is there anybody working on the numbers to get to that? And my own sense, and again, I, you know, I don't know that it has to be per, you know, whatever, evaluation, thousand dollars, evaluation, whatever, that it's more just a straight, you got a house, you've got twenty, you pay twenty-five bucks. That's kind of the way I would like to look at it. And the business is, you know, that's, I don't know, you have to do that a little differently. Maybe you have to do it by square footage of impervious surfaces, but
Well, Randy can get the information on how other neighboring communities have done it.
Sure. But I'm looking at the actual numbers.
You're going to find out the same thing we found out with the tax rate though, Terry, that we don't have enough businesses. I mean, the cost of businesses would put businesses out of town.
You mean to have a separate fee?
Right, right. We just don't have enough commercial or industrial to support it. So we'd have to approach this from a townwide perspective, just like we do the tax rate.
A uniform fee.
Right, a uniform fee.
And that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking, is anybody doing it? I mean, all right, so I'm just throwing, we got a hundred, we got a hundred businesses in town. And, uh, you know, this first one's a hundred thousand dollars, it's a hundred dollars per, per business, you know, no, a thousand dollars per business, and then that's all done. Now, I don't want to do that, I mean, I don't want them paying a thousand bucks a year in additional fees to pay for it. But, I mean, if we have, I, I don't know how many homes we've got in town.
How many parcels?
How many, whatever, whatever it is, however we figure it out, but, you know, because I don't think it's going to be, I don't think it has to be a huge amount per business where it's going to put somebody out of business.
I think about thirty-five hundred parcels.
Thank you.
Right. But you just, again, not to be repetitive, just look at why we do it, we, we have a single tax rate.
But you're talking about an equity form.
Right.
The first question is whether or not you want to, in principle, um, do the legal research on establishing such a fee system and then you deal with, about the equity part of how you allocate it to people and impose it upon people because there may be certain legal steps that the, uh, the town attorney would have to advise you on. Well, who would have the authority to do it? Would it be the selectmen? Would it, would it have to go to town meeting? Would it be you as a road commissioner? I'm not sure. We, we would have to figure out under what statutory authority who would be able to do that, so.
And do we want to spend that money, right, do we want to spend that money and go down that road when I, I think we already know the answer? We, you know, that we're a community, this is a community-wide problem. We don't have enough business and industry.
No, no, I'm, I'm right, I'm not talking about, I'm just talking about, if you're making it a fee, you gotta, you gotta do the research in the legality a certain way. If you're just going to do it as a budget line item for the general fund, then you don't have to do any of those steps. But you'll always have the risk of how that and every other decision you make gets you up to your levy limit ceiling under Prop two and a half, whereas you've been fortunate to be able to use free cash offsets for a number of years, but you may not always have that mechanism. So you just need to be mindful of how would we do this if we didn't have that mechanism.
And again, I, I mean, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I mean, if you had a house, everybody, you know, for every parcel or however you want to say it, pays twenty-five dollars a year and the business pays, a business pays forty dollars a year. I don't think that difference is anything can put anybody out of business. But I don't have those numbers in front of me, so I can't tell you that. But, you know, I know as far as taxes go, we're the same and I'm fine with that. That's, that's, that helps bring businesses in. But, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do this, I mean, somebody that's got a parking lot like, like, um, you know, Big Y and the rest of that stuff, yeah, I mean, if we're talking stormwater, they, they accumulate a lot, a lot more stormwater than somebody that has a dirt driveway like me at my house, so. And they're going to be impacted in a, in a much broader way by complying with the regulation down the road. Because they're going to have to comply with the regulation as themselves, I believe, as well as the town, our buildings. You're not going to be able to just let it run into the manhole or down the street. You might have to retain it on the property, I don't know. But there's going to be other costs associated with, I would think, with big parking lot.
And I think you make an excellent point. I mean, some of these
They're already going to be.
Newer construction projects, right, the work that goes into the subsurface, I mean, some of these guys are making underground lakes underneath their parking lots to slow the dissipation of water off the site. So, yeah, that's part of it. Um, and there's, the engineering costs and the development costs go high, get very expensive very fast for new construction. Uh, I did take a quick, a million bucks divided by thirty-five hundred parcels, two-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars.
Yeah.
So it's not twenty-five bucks.
No, okay.
I'm only saying, it's, it's a big number, right? I, I only, I did it because I remember when we were fooling around with the, uh, North Pond money, right? Well, it, it was eighty bucks a person on the ten thousand people, right? So, uh, you know, if you wanted to pass the hat for that project, right, on that, but, so, you know, if you just look at, that's, it's not an insignificant number. It's five bucks or ten bucks on your tax bill, that's two-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars.
Well, then millions would fund the first five years too, right?
Right, I'm just saying, I just did math. So you can carve that up every one and just divide the number by, by thirty-five hundred, but, you know, a million bucks is, is that. And so if you divide it over, you know, three years or five years, it's still thirty-five, forty dollars. You know, it's not an insignificant amount though. And then you would notice that on the tax rate.
A million versus a hundred thousand, so.
So, it's thirty bucks, right?
Thirty bucks.
This year.
For this year, right, exactly. And then it goes up and so maybe, maybe it's fifty bucks in the Guys got to stab at that. Well, I just, just like to see the numbers.
Well, I think it's also, it's, this is really, I mean, I think there's two things here at the end of Randy's thing that we really need to talk about as both boards and the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen is, is the funding mechanism for this and the funding mechanism for, you know, what's the appetite for the road, roadwork that needs to be done? I've been talking about, I know Joe mentioned it several times and I've mentioned it a few times, Russ as well, is, these are long-lived assets. They're thirty-year projects, a road, right? You redo a road twenty years, fifteen years, whatever you want to call it, right? Do you just, you can't continue to spend that yearly out of free cash and budget for an asset that lives that long. You've got to look at the longer-term picture, just like when we built the fire station or police station or another building or, or, or infrastructure. It has a long life. You can finance it over a longer life and get the, you know, treat it that way. I don't mean to go there now, but it, it's a good segue to it. But, you know, and this, and the Finance Committee, for this type of thing, when you're talking about a million-dollar expense over several years, how are you going to do that? Yeah, you could just build it into the tax rate, that could be our decision to do it, or we could look at another mechanism and, and, and the equity issue as to how you do it. I, I agree with Russ, there's just not enough businesses that if you come up with a, a different formula, a two-tiered thing, that you get enough bang for the buck on the businesses, frankly, same with the tax rate. To see a measurable impact on the tax rate without just murdering the businesses, we've, we've done the math. There's so, so few percentage, as a percentage of the total revenue, it doesn't make sense. And it makes, what helps keep Southwood somewhat attractive to new business is the tax rate, right? Versus, Westfield's thirty-four and change, you know, on the business tax rate versus our seventeen and a half.
We sit down and we have meetings with companies that think about citing here, and that is one of the selling points. Is that it's the uniformity, not so much the rate, the fact that, hey, they're going to be treated the same.
Right. But there's still be, I mean, but you'd also need to run the money, the numbers.
Right.
Like if your business is, you know, square footage and all that stuff is a million dollars and you're paying, you know, if you're going to bump, you're going to bump it up quite a bit, it might be a lot more expensive to do it as a, as a, um, just the straight general fund taxes as opposed to, as opposed to, you know, a, a fee.
Yeah, because it's an unfunded mandate.
Well, and to your point, to your point, Terry, one other way to look at it is too, is it, it does tend to follow size, so perhaps one way to look at it is on, on a, like the CPC type of structure where it's a, it may be a, a decimal percentage of your total tax becomes that, right? CPC is three percent of your property tax with a hundred thousand dollar exemption. Maybe that, this type of fee structure is based off of that, right? So that you get, Big Y is going to pay more than a guy that has, that lives on Powder Mill Road. Just by the nature, the tax bill's bigger because of the size, and so it'll be somewhat commensurate and follow that. But it won't, it, it wouldn't tend to be dramatically different to, to the businesses versus residential. It would be more based on the size, which is directly measured by surface. So maybe that's a way to look at it.
Right, and I think, you know, for the most part, we haven't undertaken this research because, in fairness, your chairperson has wanted to hold off on doing that. So we really would need to hear from you guys having your own meeting and figuring out some of these different options with your chairperson present so that we then could go and look at those options.
Well, we've all not wanted to do this.
You're absolutely right.
No, I'm just saying, I don't want to do something, we shouldn't be making a major decision.
No, we should have, we should have a committee that's going to be looking at how we're going to start, you know, fund it. If it's not just that, it's other stuff. But that's a, that's a, another big, uh, big hit to the town that we have to do, that we're mandated, unfunded mandate, you know, we're all against that. We thought we could stall for a while and, and
And we have, and we have.
We have.
I think you thought you were going to get relief from Washington DC and it's just, they're just working on other things that aren't helping local government.
They're not doing the damn thing.
There's nothing helping local government.
Even at the state level, they're not doing much.
So when there's an appetite to do that, certainly the selectmen can authorize a Tom Scanlon to come to the table, a Ben Coyle, because he helped Randy and I compute all the sewer regulation changes and the fees and the process we had to go through. You know, Randy knows what we're going to have to go and get for information to do this type of thing. But when, when there's enough appetite and consensus for people to, for us to call those people to a meeting and, and have a designee or two out of your seven people, we'll do it.
Enough appetite. We got to do it, that's all. Interesting choice, interesting choice of words.
Well, Murphy's is sitting there, I can smell it.
You better continue, Randy.
Stipulating the conversation, Randy, well done.
I think we made headway here.
Yes, absolutely.
I said, holy cow, this is awful thick.
That's right. And on to page two.
Oh, uh, all right, so solid waste. What I did is, uh, we have one big line item in solid waste, which is called refuse fees. And I've taken a lot of costs out of that refuse fee line item and kind of similar to the discussion we had on engineering, talking to the town accountant, I'd like to break out some of those costs into new line items to more account for what they're actually being used for. So I do have some new line items in solid waste, and then I also reallocated some, uh, numbers in a number of line items to kind of better match what, um, you know, what we actually use out of those. And a lot of those, I've, if we gone over like, say, a vehicle repair, you know, what I'll do is I'll take money out of refuse fees to take, to compensate for that going over there. So I've increased some line items, I've also decreased some line items to kind of more account for, to be more accurate to what we're actually planning on, on using.
Randy, now I see the different adjustments. Is the refuse fee line item that you're going to use where these things were being charged to, does that get an offsetting reduction?
So I, so I, there was a reduction, but then I, I kind of added it back because we do have some new growth in town, right? We have development on the, the greens, we have development behind Big Y. Obviously, new growth is nice, but there's also costs associated with that. And then one of the costs is, 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 you know, fees to, you know, disposable trash. So I took away from that refuse fee line item and then I am adding back with all that new growth. Does that make sense? So there's no change in the refuse, refuse, refuse fees line item, um, but there was some back-end capitalization to accommodate for that. So vehicle repair, uh, compact repair, um, these are self-explanatory, just to want to increase those line items to five thousand dollars. Uniforms, I think we talked about a uniform contract with Syntas. The line item for hauling tires, we haul our own tires, we don't hire someone to do that, so we haven't used that line item in a while, so I just want to eliminate that entirely. Supplies, this is to account for any supplies we need at the transportation, the trailer, um, filters, lubrication for the vehicles, stuff like that. And that's the five thousand for the, for the supplies. Composting, uh, reducing that line item to more account for what we actually spend composting each year. And the same thing for mandated inspections through D E P, uh, that's the, the fee we've been seeing, six hundred bucks. The new line items are for college traveling and education. Um, there are some new OSHA regulations that are in effect that'll require our, um, all of our guys to, to take more education classes, continuing education classes, so this will help pay for the, the costs. And then the two big line items are for the trailer. This is our, we have a trailer at the, at the facility. This is the rental fee for that trailer. I'm sorry, yeah, that's the rental fee for the trailer. And then the next item, the twenty-three thousand dollars, is for a new storage building. So behind the hopper, we've got a, a concrete pad. We'd like to add some more storage capacity for our equipment. If you go to the facility, you'll see that all of our equipment out there is outside all year long. We've got backhoe, loader, a truck, the chipper. Um, we have our roll-off vehicle, which is at the garage. I'd like to move that to transportation, create a base at the garage as well. So having a, a new facility, a new building will help, help keep those vehicles, equipment undercover and help us keep those in better condition.
Randy, how many square feet were you contemplating there?
Uh, I think it's about twenty by forty. Don't quote me on that, but
Just roughly?
Yeah, twenty by forty, yeah, yeah. And the last item is a roll-off container. This is something that we purchase every year, usually one of our containers for trash or recyclables. Just gets worn out, so we replace, replace one container a year. Any questions on solid waste?
Just a comment. Um, your men have done a wonderful job this year of checking the stickers and they have caught people who are not updating their sticker annually. And although, to me, it's a minor cost, I think it's a tremendous service that is provided to the community. But I've heard people who were turned around and, and one person commented to me, they were very upset. I haven't paid for a sticker in three years. And I said, well, shame on you. You know, it, that's ridiculous, but I really appreciate that. They've always done a wonderful job. And this year I saw a couple of things and then I had people complaining that they got caught and I thought, I, I, well, good for you. You know, go to town hall, get your sticker like everybody else is supposed to be doing. But again, they just always step it up, so thank you.
I appreciate the kind, I'll pass it on to the guys as well. It, it is a tough task. It's as tough to tell someone to turn them away when there's no one else there and it's easy to say, oh, go ahead and do it, but they've been really good this year. We have a new foreman who's been there for almost a year, about a year now.
Yeah.
And he's, he's been very, very active.
Michael's a good foreman.
He, he's been very diligent.
Not only stickers, but making sure people recycle properly as well, so putting the right materials in the right containers.
And, and the people that I have seen him approach have been less than polite to him when he points out something. And he does it in a very polite way, but they do not receive it very well. So it's not a comfortable position to be in, but he is diligent about it.
Appreciate that, thank you.
I'm running on a room on my windshield for all the stickers, so.
Why are you not removing it?
You're supposed to take it off.
Ding dong.
Time to buy a new vehicle.
Uh, I'll move on to water. Ed Johnson is not here today. He texted me this morning. He said he's, he's very sick. He apologizes. He was, I talked to him yesterday. He planned to come in, he just got, I think the flu woke up something hard this morning. So I'll go through the water items. Not a whole lot of changes from last year. First item is uniforms, again, a small increase to account for the, the contract with Syntas. Leak detection, I want to keep that, ten thousand dollars for this year. Hydrants replacements, again, twenty thousand dollars. We have all, a lot of old hydrants in, in town that we're, we update and replace annually. Uh, SCADA system upgrades, uh, drop that a little bit to fifteen thousand dollars. We, we put a lot of money into that SCADA system the last few years and it's paying off, um, but, uh, there's still a lot of work to do. And so we want to keep that, keep that line item. And then also for security improvements, uh, camera systems and other upgrades of the tanks and the, and the pump stations. Keep that line item at ten thousand dollars. Any questions on water?
No.
All right, I'll be quick here. Sewer, last thing here. Uh, sewer flow fees, I mean, I want to increase that line item. So we have a, a contract with Westfield. All of our flow goes to Westfield Treatment Plant. We are in year four of a six-year contract with them. A rate increase, each year there's a rate increase to Westfield. So this is primarily to account for that rate increase that we paid towards the city of Westfield for our fees. Uh, uniforms, again, a small increase due to our contract. Griner pump maintenance, again, this is a carryover from, uh, pretty much every year, you know, we own We own 265 some odd grinder pumps in town. Most are original to the system 15, 20 years ago. So this is to replace these pumps as they become obsolete and outdated and worn out. Skate upgrades, we just talked about that in the water as well, wanna keep that line item. And the last new item is a sewer flow meter. So this, this past fall was a very wet fall. We did notice there was a lot of, uh, water. Increase in inflows to what we send to Westfield. And we suspect a lot of that is due to groundwater infiltration, rain flow. And we wanna purchase a flow meter that we can move from site to site, from mainhole to mainhole, and kinda monitor flows for a week or two at a time, particularly during rain events, and kinda see where, if there's a spike in flow associated with a rain event. And that way, it'll help us identify, you know, where that source or sources are. So that's the cost for that sewer flow meter. So I made it through the first two pages. Anything else in backup, as I mentioned, to consider as you review these, these requests? Any questions, final comments?
Just, it's not even, it's more of a, uh, informational. We had a meeting last week with the first selectman of Southfield, Carl and I, regarding the LPP agreement. And part of that conversation was that Southfield is, once again, interested in starting a conversation regarding interconnection around the lakes for sewers on the Southfield side.
So West, West Southfield.
The West Southfield side. So just put it out there that that's something that they would be, that they wanna revisit again.
We can work with them on that. There, there is some work actually being done. Lakewood Village is extending the sewer line off close to the Southfield town line.
Correct.
It'll be a great spot to tie it to. There's plenty of capacity in our, in our system to account for when the project was these 20 years ago.
Right.
Pump station, that pump station was, was built to accommodate flow from Southfield.
Yeah, right. So our capacity is 500,000 gallons a day, and we're using about a third of that right now.
Right.
Yeah.
Anyway, just putting that out there, with the topic of discussion, that would help us with the, what we're carrying on the tax rate for all the infrastructure that's bought and paid for that we're not fully utilizing, so if we can bring some of that in.
Yeah, there's nothing concrete there. I mean, there were some studies done and there was people, but she's not, she's not ready to come to us with anything on her feedback.
I know that they were trying to fund their library, I think that was a big knock. And that they wanted, they had to get through that.
That nightmare is just about over, from what she told us.
Well, they, now they have to renovate their town hall. They have done other stuff to it, but they actually have to do a full-scale renovation of the town hall.
I think a lot of them.
Maybe an addition to it.
Sorry.
No, anything else? Okay, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
I'll stop in C and D.
Parking rec. Then you're not a horse, Carl.
Push it down.
Morning, morning.
We held you up from your break?
No, no, no. We're skipping our break for you guys.
We'll go quick then.
Because we felt bad about making you wait last year. We all took a vote, and we want you to...
It was quick this year.
Right.
Only five minutes instead of an hour and five minutes?
That's right.
Four minutes, they've only had a wait here.
I think four minutes. I know, but we, that's a big improvement. And if you can move it along even faster, we'll give you more money.
That was simply, that was simply one person's opinion.
So what, would you like to just go down through each block, each island?
Sure.
So some of it we can go through very quickly, 'cause it's pretty much the same stuff every year. So on Form 1, the top part is parking rec salaries. To explain a few, the activities director is Cara, as we know. There has been a request through us for a raise for her, which I can explain after we go through, if you'd like. Our rails, trail salary is, is our one employee that we have who maintains the rails for trails. Beach salary is our lifeguards and our managers that we, we pay, pay for out of that. Any questions on, on that? Parking rec operations, we have park maintenance ongoing. We requested the same amount as we, we have in past years. Fire item, fireworks is no longer a line item that we, we request. Beach contracts, those are pretty much, I think, those are repairs and improvements that we do at the beach. Minor equipment is, is the same amount that we ask for every year. We keep, we just keep that in for miscellaneous fees. Supplies, we use for our office or for Cara for parking rec office stuff, same amount requested. Various programs is where we use the funds to pay for the kids' parties, Halloween, Christmas, things like that. We'd also like to keep that because hopefully we can add some more activities as we go along. We have beach expenses, those pay for the operation of the beach, the equipment that is in the kitchen, food that we prepare that we sell at the beach. Old beach expenses is for maintenance of the beach. That also has a request in one of our line items where we have requested for some extra funding to accommodate a request through Dick Rannells for some improvements on the erosion of the beach, so I can give you a little explanation on that. Wally Park bathroom, we didn't put anything for that, but that also goes into repairs and for upkeep of the bathroom. But I think we have that, we, we use other funds throughout Wally Park. Rails for trail vandalism, we consistently have a lot of vandalism on the rail for trail. And we pay for that out of our pocket, and a lot of times that also comes through with the, um, the rails for trails. The Friends of the Rails for Trails also raise money and help us out with that. We annually do an old spring beach cleanup. That is to cut back on the overgrowth of the area in case there are people that like to utilize that area. Winterizing the beach building, basically, that's what it is, is we just close it up for the winter, and that pays for that. Wally Park winterization is also another one where we, our town maintenance does that for us, where we clean, we clean the bathrooms and then we winterize the bathrooms. Wally Park miscellaneous maintenance, you can see that there is an increase in that. And that can go along with, if you go down to Wally Park Water, which is one, two, three, four down, we relocate, we've reallocated some of the funds. Reason being is because we use that money, or that money would be used for, to pay for things like some of the repairs in the park, lime, field maintenance, paint for the, for the, painting for the fields for games when we have them. Equipment for the fields for whatever sport is going on at the time. We, next would be Wally Park sprinkler. That pays for any repairs, maintenance of the sprinkler systems. It seems that we, we've had a year or two where we've had to repair a lot of, a lot of the sprinklers.
Does that include winterization?
Uh, yes, it does, yep. And that's usually, or that's pretty much done by Down Under is our supplier for that. Wally Park supplies, again, goes through anything for toilet paper for the bathrooms, something, if something, an activity is going on. Sometimes we need to add signs, take away signs, things like that. That's where the, that supplies comes from. Informational materials, it's just a flat rate that we, we have every year used to put out flyers or informational things regarding the park. Again, like I said before, going with the Wally Park maintenance, miscellaneous maintenance, that was, uh, we didn't use a lot, so we had, uh, that was as a result of going to the well system that we had put into the park a few years back. So our water bills have decreased. However, we would like to, to maintain that, that fund in order to help pay, offset other funds that are within the park. Rails for trail expenses, we had, if you look back, just an explanation in case someone is curious, in fiscal year 2018, we had spent quite a bit on wa, um, rails for trails. That was as a result of some projects that were, where we added a couple of benches in the park. And there was another, another, we paid for concrete pads to be installed and the rail trail benches that were also installed. And that's where we went over by $2,400.
I used those benches.
Yes, I think a lot of people did.
I used the trail, I used the benches.
Yeah. Okay, so moving on to Form 2? This, this is the parking rec for picnic tables, ADA compliant. We always try to maintain the ADA compliance. We don't have, at this point in time, we are ADA compliant, so we haven't requested anything. Moving down to one of the line items, the scag grass collections. That is something that we requested for this year. And also, we had a backpack blower request, which was $4.40. And we attempted to, or we are in the process of attempting to change that request into a road tiller because a backpack blower was donated. However, we've had our employees at the park request the road tiller in order to keep the fields, the, the inner part of all of the baseball fields and stuff in pristine condition.
You're gonna deal with that change aft, you know, after the budget hearing in your other meeting?
The finance committee.
It's on your agenda.
Okay. I think it was presented recently, or was supposed to have been presented recently to you guys?
They have the paper.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're on it.
Okay, so new, new item list, again, like I, like I had said earlier, was that we were asking for the activities director's salary to be increased. She prepared for us a list of what she, all of her job duties, which I can submit to you guys as soon as I find out.
So will she be working additional hours?
No, she wouldn't be working additional hours. She maintains 18 hours in, regularly through the week. During the summer, she works 25 to 28. The reason why she does the 25 to 28 in the summer is because she does a lot of maintenance, or she does a lot of overseeing of the town beach. She has the ability to come and go, because she's working in this building. She can go to the beach, check on the employees, check on any kind of needs that they may have. And also, she pretty much maintains the overall, overall management of that.
We have no director to oversee everything, which I've said before. And she basically oversees our two part-time employees at the park, all the employees at the town beach when that's open, and our employee at the rail trail. I mean, we're just a board, and she pretty much oversees them as much as she can along with us trying to do things, instead of having them being overseen by building and grounds or public works like most towns. So we kinda try to keep them on track and the best we can. But she pretty much handles all that in addition to her regular jobs.
Yeah, I, I think you really should submit that to the board of selectmen. That's really a personnel issue, it's not really a budget issue.
Okay, I think we were just trying to explain why we would...
Yeah, yeah, and I appreciate that.
Which, um, this could also be some, this was her, what she had done up, so...
Right.
Submit that with us, yeah.
Right, right.
To the boards.
Yeah, 'cause there are other, the other revolving park funds are ineligible use for that type of an expense if the selectmen so choose.
We just, at our last meeting, we went through it again.
Not benefits.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, um, so moving on to Wally Park lawn care. We requested a amount of $17,155. That's due to the fact that, that all pretty much pays for heritage lawn care to maintain fields through fertilizing and the four, the whole four-season system of fertilizing.
But that's, that's an annual thing, correct?
That's an annual thing, yes.
So, okay.
Was that, where was that paid for previously?
We basically kind of put it together from our parking fees that we get for the Rugged Maniac and the motocross parking and any other events we have there, and renting out the fields. But that's different every year, and it's not a guaranteed thing. Like this year, the Rugged Maniac, they started doing their own parking at the Legion, so we basically took in half of what we had in previous years for that. So it's kinda hodgepodge, put together from whatever we taking money in on.
Okay, along that same line, you're talking about revenue that you generate at the park. Do we have any document that indicates the amount of revenue that you generated this past year?
We, we, we brought in a total of $49,881.
Okay, and I guess the next question to follow that up would be with, how are you, how does that revenue offset this budget, some of these budget expenses?
Well, last year, the way the selectmen did it is they went through their requested items, and the selectmen determined which ones the general fund was going to pick up. In the balance of the items, the selectmen said, that's what the other revenue coming in because of the rental of the fields. Because the whole purpose of increasing the administrative person's hours from 18 hours to 28 was those other 10 hours were going to be used to promote the fields, do the bookings, and make sure that the extra income was gonna come in. So that was also gonna help that person's pay, and it was gonna pay for a lot of the stuff that the park needed. But at the same time, the park was running out of the initial donation John Wally gave with the park was about $100,000. So those, those funds are just about gone.
Yes.
So they need to make sure that all these new bookings and these leagues, as well as those two or three parking opportunities a year, were gonna be in place to cover the, cover the costs. So the selectmen wanted to make sure that, okay, this is what was represented to the town in the approval of the project. Let's make sure the plan is being executed as opposed to just having the general fund pick everything up, so. And that's what they've been doing. They've been trying to figure out what they can pay for out of the funds that come in and what they can't pay for. And of course, one, the water was a big issue. When, when there was gonna be huge water bills, and they were 30, 40,000. They, they came to the town, the town donated the money, and, and the project got, the wells got installed fairly quick. And then all of a sudden, that saved a lot of money in those earlier operational water bills. And now she's, what Jeanie's showing you, she's being able to even lower it even more now and take that money and offset other increases in their line items.
Alright, so at this point in time, the revenue that's applied against expenses is gonna be kind of part of an annual review by the board of selectmen, and it'll be adjusted based on different considerations.
I mean, you're, you're, you know, obviously, they're an independent elected board. Your board's going to be getting the copy of the revolving funds like you asked for, for every department that generates them, right? Every year.
What I'm thinking of is that, over...
This is the norm.
What I'm thinking of is that over time, maybe this annual review becomes less significant and there's kind of more of a general formula about how revenue is applied to expenses. Maybe not, I don't know, I'm just...
Right, well, that was the hope, that the park would be able to, at some point, get to some self-sufficiency. It's just not there yet.
Yeah, what they, they were, they had been providing, and I just haven't seen it yet this year, 'cause I'm sure we're gonna get it, is...
Our annual sheet, we have, we have that.
See, I knew we'd have, 'cause they've been on a great trajectory.
Yeah.
We had spent money on the field maintenance and the field update so that they would have more opportunities to rent those fields and have the parking dollars as a percentage of the total come down.
Right.
And the rental stuff come up, so I'm...
That, that's the overall plan, excuse me, but one thing I need to tell you guys is that, this is not, this, there is an expense, not that you're not aware of this, but we are encountering expenses left and right. Every time parking rec meets, every week, it's Wally Park, Wally Park, Wally Park, okay?
I do not.
My apologies, but, you know, you're gonna, you know, you're gonna say, well, you guys make...
It's not money-making.
It is not a money-making operation either.
It won't be.
We knew that from the beginning. We knew that from the beginning.
So, I mean, to be quite frank with you, when you say, hey, you pulled in 50 grand... So, I mean, to be quite frank with you, when you say, hey, you pulled in fifty grand, well, we had to pay twice. I'm trying to, I was trying to look through my emails. We had to pay twice for four thousand dollars in repairs to repair our lawnmower, okay? So, you know, we got a lawnmower that's six-plus years old, and that's part of the reason why we, we put this on a, on a, um, a line request. Um, it's a, and I know I'm gonna get to it, or I don't have to now, but it's a thousand dollars every single time you turn on the lights. One, per month, every single time you turn on the lights to have an event there. So now, we gotta charge the people who are coming in that, and then they're like, well, why? Well, 'cause it's a thousand dollars, then we pay the bill. So that's an issue, and that's April to November.
That's a demand charge, that's the word.
Yeah, that's a demand charge, and we met with them.
Right, 'cause we, we had the electric company, I had to come to your meeting.
And they were like, sorry, and they pretty much told us, they're like, we don't care who you are. They're like, we'll charge, we'll charge that, so we were like, okay.
Yeah.
But that's, that's their, that was their straight-up, we're like, you don't cut any breaks for, um, you know, nonprofits, blah, blah, nope.
No, they don't.
That's the demand charge. So, um, one day, I would love to walk in and say, yeah, this is our profit, we're keeping this. But the, as soon as we get it, we're spending it, you guys. It's because, you know, we're trying to.
Preaching to the choir.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I'm just trying to say that.
It had to be at the town meeting when, the way it was sold.
Right.
It was sold as turnkey and profitable.
There's that.
Yeah, or.
It was sold turnkey.
And of course, you still have the person on your board that was part of that.
You guys are doing a good job.
And you really are.
Getting that going in the right direction.
And you two got the short straw to come today, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, I mean, the money we take in isn't guaranteed. We have a, a soccer club that rents it out for the spring and fall. That's probably a little less than half of the money we take in. But out of that money, you have to have the fields.
Oh, yeah. No, no, we get it, but that's why we, we want it closer.
Correct.
It's not all coming out of the general fund.
Yeah, we don't think we're gonna get to the point where you're saying, we made a million dollars and we're keeping it. We're not, we're not there.
Right.
But what we're trying to do is, we're supporting, we've been supportive of getting, of keeping the park up ahead of the income on the tax rate to continue to draw in more soccer clubs, baseball clubs, softball clubs.
We have been drawing in more, but it's not, it's not guaranteed.
No, we understand that.
Rent everything every year.
Dude, nothing's guaranteed.
And we wanna, you know, and then we get in the battle, because everybody who comes to us wants it for free.
Right.
We have that issue.
It's the town party, right.
Then we have people complaining, well, how come I can't have the field if I live in South, or why can't my kids play out? But this team from Grandy, Connecticut can come. We're like, 'cause they pay us, and I, and, you know, we were like, no, you know, no disrespect to you, so, but we, we have to make a profit somewhere. So we have this Grandy team who calls it their home team, their home site. So we make sure that they pay very well, so we make sure that they're, the fields are in good condition, blah, blah, blah. So we try to work with the best with, with what we have. And again, you know, we're, we're getting the bills, and they're coming in, and we're paying them, and we're kind of like, where are we gonna take it from? So, and I know that that's not a new thing for anybody sitting here. So it's just a, I guess it's just a matter-of-fact explanation of how we're trying to maintain this.
Right.
Sure.
Now, I, I call them like the soccer fields, I call those money, the money fields, okay?
Yeah, to put a lot of money in, to get a lot of money.
But again, those are the ones that are getting the, getting the revenue. But the, like the small ones down below, now, if a kid, you know, if a group wants to come in and just play there, you know, Sunday afternoon or whatever there, you still allow that, right? Not for kids out of town?
Yeah, we don't, I mean, we're not telling, we're not telling.
It depends when, when things are rented out.
Yeah, but if it's rented out, no, I'm sorry, you can't do that because.
Correct, but if it's not, we have, you know, usually we'll ask for a donation of something, but we're not trying to,
Right.
um, take somebody who, you know, wants to have a practice or that.
A family reunion or something's over there, wants to, wants to kick the ball around, or?
Yeah, we don't, we don't stop that.
I mean, we have people that donate things. We have somebody from Bartlett Trees who, in exchange for using the soccer, is maintaining the trees over there for us.
What?
And you get pavilions rentals once in a while.
Yeah.
Their functions, because, and I know the Rotary Club also runs concerts up there, too.
Yeah, but we don't, we don't have lights there, we're hoping to get those.
Yeah, that's, that's a work in progress.
No, we have the lights, but we just have to get power, power out.
That might be a future CPC project if there's anything left of that kind, so.
Well, we, we, we have.
Plus the thousand dollars to turn those lights on, right? Or that just add to the other bill?
No, no, it's just the field lights because of the demand when you turn the.
Sure.
That's what we get hit with, so we try to tell people if we're turning them on once, rent it ten times during the month if you want, 'cause it's twenty dollars, thirty dollars more.
Right.
And we do try to do that, we try to drum up people, we're like, well, hey, we offer to the high school. So, excuse me, so we know that, um, the, the lights are gonna be turned on. We, we went to the high school and said, do you guys wanna do some games where, where you get the night, you got a night game, senior game or something where there's an activity that can promote their thing? And then what we asked them was, charge five bucks per car, and, you know, there, that, that can offset some of that cost as well. So we try to be creative with the ways in which we can offer people the service, but at the same time, get a little something out of it.
Did the schools, did the schools offer to you to do any of the maintenance work on the fields? 'Cause they have their own mowers, they got all that stuff for the other fields.
Yeah, and I don't think that'll happen. I think we've got, I think we've asked about that, and they were like, no.
I know Joe spoke to Jeff Houle about it.
Uh, every year, we have a discussion, you know, I think we're on our third anniversary. Um, and I'm at the point now where I just want the goddamn machine for two hours to see how long it would really take to mow those fields with a real piece of equipment. So then you could go back to wherever we need to go and say, yeah, the, the piece of equipment's ninety grand, but it took them two and a half hours, not a scag mower for ten and twenty-three hours. But I can't even get that out of Jeff Houle. And I know we're all busy, and then it gets pushed back, but, uh, we're at the point where we just want it done once, just to see what it would really take.
Maybe get a demo. Tuesday night, just kind of bring it up there for a demo.
From a, from a company.
I don't think they'd do that for you.
Yeah, yeah, so you're thinking about buying one.
You just say, hey, bring your operator and your guy and your machine up to the field and, you know, on April fifteenth, and just run it, and let's see how long it takes to do it. One time.
Or I can have my school department just come over with the mower for two and a half hours or whatever it takes to be done with at once, so they can shut up Joe Diddy, and they can't bitch about it anymore. It's that simple.
But the issue is the school department, correct?
No, I didn't mean another company, I meant them.
Oh, yeah, them, yeah, yeah, it'll happen.
I don't know if they have the personnel. I, I would check with that.
No, uh, uh, trust me, I've checked. You're talking to the wrong person about beating the ass.
Just to do a demo, they got the person.
Yeah, and honestly.
For a demo, absolutely.
Yeah, if I start sitting at Jeff's house at six AM and drive to work with him, I'll get it done. But we all get busy, and it just, you know, during budget season, we'll talk about it. And when Jeff was on the Capcom, we could talk about it a lot.
It was good to see.
And he got smart to get off of that, but so.
[laughing]
So we wouldn't have direct contact anymore.
Chelsea.
But we'll be meeting with him on Tuesday, so that's the good news.
I think we had the baseball coach who was coming in and, um, doing some repairs and things on the field. Uh, the ninety-foot, which is a big one, with the lights. And, uh, we kind of gave him free rein to repair, um, you know, do whatever, to get the fields ready, even allow him to use the equipment to line the fields for a game. So it's not, you know, that's what we kind of do. But then I think, uh, he, I don't know why he stopped, did he get sick of it?
We got, we got one of our park guys to do all the lining, I mean, that's another one of Kara's jobs. She.
Right.
Pretty much lets them know what we have going on, and they'll make sure the fields are lined and mowed a day or two before things are going on.
So, so there's the whole twenty minutes behind seventeen grand.
I appreciate that.
Good. Um, so I can move quickly, I think I already explained the ever-source, uh, issue?
Yeah, you should do.
Um, and even with the scag mower, we, we obviously know that, uh, I told you about the four thousand dollar repairs. Uh, it's six-plus years old. Uh, we, we also worked with the rail trail because they were willing to give us some money. They were just like, hey, if we give you this much, what can you guys match, kind of deal? Um, the, the, the plan with the mowers is, is to have a backup and to have backups so that when one has to go in for repairs, we still are able to, uh, maintain the rail trail because we get a lot of complaints from people about the rail trail. It's not mowed, it's not mowed long enough, it's, my dogs getting ticks, we get all kinds of complaints about it. So, um, we were, how long were we out of a mower last year?
Five, five weeks in May.
And that was our only mower. So we, it grew pretty high in some spots, and so that's where we got a bunch of complaints. Um, so the last three, the last three, no, excuse me, the tree removal for the rail trail and the, uh, repair rail trail root damage are part of a grant that I had completed. And I sent you an overview of the grant, I just sent it around.
Yeah, got it.
Um, they're part of a grant that I had submitted through Mass Rail Trails. And every year, they offer money. Um, the key is, is you submit the application. It's a reimbursement-type kind of grant, though, where they, you do have, you pay twenty percent, they'll match the eighty, but you have to pay for it all upfront. And then you submit your receipts and, and, um, your explanations, and then you, they give you back the eighty percent. So with that being said, these two items were actually going to be initially submitted to you guys, and then the, the rail trail, the grant came as an afterthought. And we added a few things to the, to the grant that also, um, some other, um, town officials were concerned about as far as, uh, some additional signs added to the rail trail for, uh, safety reasons. And also, there's a crosswalk plan to go in on Depot Street where there is an actual, um, not a light, but a warning. And it's gonna be solar-powered, which is an idea where there's less things that we have to keep up on. So I, so the letter indicates the, the total, um, amount of the project. I broke them down. Uh, this is also something that I will be presenting to the board of selectmen, um, on Tuesday. Um, but at this point in time, that money's not guaranteed yet. And we won't know till, um, maybe May if we were, uh, considered for it. And then we wouldn't get the money till July. You do have two years to complete the work. So if it were something where we were offered, hey, we'll do, we'll start with this, uh, we can always come back and, um, as long as we're in that two-year period, I would think that we could get, still get the stuff. And mean, in the meantime, put in another application for a grant for something else. Um, so that's where that chunk of money comes from.
Okay.
The Old Town Beach erosion was, was, uh, something that was suggested to us to put in some, some, um, kind of, uh, grasses or something to eliminate, uh, there was DPW.
Cautch, cautch, swell.
Yeah. Anyway, we don't know about that, so we kind of, it was a DPW request with, I think, Dick Grannell's. Uh, and the two thousand was an estimate for perhaps what could happen with the swell that they just talked about and adding some type of grasses or something along those lines to kind of, um, hold the beach together. It's not something that's used, but it's, uh.
We pretty much just clean it once a year and do nothing else for the rest of the year.
But if they made it into the budget, would you be in the scope of the budget?
I think that is all of our requests.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any other questions or concerns or something you want to tell us about?
Yes.
Guys, quick question on this grant, and I was sorry, I was talking to Carl. Do you know if this grant application, if this, if we were to fund some of this stuff in the budget, would that be cons, be a problem for the grant?
Beyond the twenty percent.
Beyond the twenty percent, so as if, I know like with fire trucks, if we budget for it, and then we get a grant for it, they won't give us the grant 'cause we already budgeted the money for it.
It's called some planting.
Yep, I got it.
But this is, this is a state grant, and that's a federal grant, so if you've got any more.
This, we have to pay for it first and then get reimbursed for it.
True, but approval of the grant.
I get it, I get what you're saying.
What comes first?
Yeah.
Right, do you just appropriate the local share? Then, then that helps you qualify for the hundred, the other eighty, and then when you're done getting the approval, then you go out, do, spend all the money, do all the work, and then they reimburse you.
Right.
Or if you voted for the entire amount of the project in your budget document, do they come along and say, you're now, you're ineligible 'cause we're now some plant?
Right.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, I, I, that has been a thought.
That's more of a federal, we find that to be more of a federal issue than a state issue.
The only thing I can tell you at this time is, is I, I mean, I've read the application, uh, guidelines over and over and over. Um, I could provide you guys with, I could leave this here that explains the grant.
Yeah, Jeannie, when you're done, there's a copy machine in the next room.
Sure.
Just run me a copy, and we'll look through it, okay?
I mean, it, it breaks down eligibility and everything. I, but I didn't, don't recall reading what your content is.
Right.
Yeah, that, that somebody does it.
It, it, right, and Jeannie reached out to me the other day in hopes of that, so.
We will review the rest of the contents of the application.
And that's for Tuesday.
Right.
Perfect, thank you.
Can we get, um, can we get your, that, uh, copy of the sheets or whatever that, uh, your income also? When you get a chance?
David, yeah.
Yeah.
Why don't you just copy that? Just copy that, put that entirely gonna copy before you leave.
All right. So can I have that real quick? Okay, is there, I don't know.
No, that's good.
That's great.
You're a great job.
You have been very busy.
Salary increase?
Yeah.
And I can provide you also, I, actually, I can do this Tuesday. I'll provide you with the, the monies that, um, the, the quotes for, whoa, the repairs.
They're already in here.
They're in here.
They are in there?
Yeah, those are in here, I don't, the only thing I didn't see was the income.
Yeah, we just didn't have that.
Yeah.
All right, so I will get that for you right now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Season's coming.
And don't get discouraged about writing grants, I mean, that's.
Right, yeah.
You're doing great.
No, I just.
I hope that, once you find out that answer, though, that would be nice to know.
Right.
We'll work it out.
Absolutely.
Just for a feature, you know?
Well, we wouldn't want you to have to go, go through all the hard work of applying for and getting a grant and find out that the budget process made you ineligible for your own, the grant.
This is the grant.
Right, oh, I know what.
Well, the, the paving part, the price we have for that is the highest it's gonna be.
And did you use the town DPW, the bids we have in place through?
Yeah, we used, uh.
Lane.
Lane.
Right, but that's through our bid.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, 'cause when we bid it out, any of our town departments can use it, and it's got all sorts of prices for walkways, uh, curbing, driveways, roads, whatever it is. That's the way we bid it out, and then people just tap into it.
Okay.
It's been pre-procured.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
Get you guys copies?
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Just one copy's fine, and then Carl will deal with it.
Yeah, let me just go in there with you.
Does everybody want a copy of the budget, though?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
I'll show you.
Coming, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Now the easy one's coming up.
It is, actually. It's pretty easy.
You breaking, or am I?
Come on up.
Oh, no, we're not breaking.
No.
We're heartbreaking.
We're all, yeah, yeah, that's, ain't that the truth?
And I heard you got some money left.
Well, it's a lot better this week than next time. Eleven o'clock on the next meeting, there you go.
I heard you got your spoon roast.
I did. I did. It wasn't as good as yours, I don't think.
I don't know, I don't know. Did you have a lot of wine before you ate it?
Uh, before and after helps.
Okay, yeah.
You mean, and the roast, are you talking about?
Oh, yeah. Then it probably tastes the same.
That's right. Um, I don't know if all of you know, Rich DePandey, which.
Hi, good morning, Rich.
Morning.
Since everyone wanted to bring Rich along and ween him into the process of, of the budget. His plate's been a little full with EMS and ALS launch, but we'll start working him into this process as well for years to come. Want to wait for Carl to come back or?
He's back.
He's almost back.
He's back.
All righty.
Hi, Dylan, thank you. Can take the plow off.
No, I wouldn't.
Where's the fire truck?
Yeah, we use your wife's truck.
I didn't get one this year, they weren't giving out fire trucks at MMA this year.
Yeah, we didn't get one.
Usually I have one.
I didn't get an ambulance.
Then we weren't giving out ambulances neither.
Well, you're not buying any, you already got the money last year.
You know what, they had some fire hydrants at the conference I just came from, I should have got.
Hydrants? I'll bring it home to my new dog Maverick. Maverick, meet a hydrant.
What do you want me to run down, level funded or minus, or how do you describe them both? I don't know if you've had time to review this document at all.
Kind of just go level funded because we can do the math on both the other side, so.
The plus and the minus. So I'll start with the fire budget. Under the salaries, obviously that's to be determined later time. The, one thing I, well, I'll come back to it, is the inspector's pay. If you're looking at a use at this point, that was a part-time position that we added and we have not filled at this point, and I'll actually address that under EMS. Radio maintenance supplies, you'll see, is a little bit involved. Our radios are aging, we have like eighty radios amongst the department where that, again, the maintenance of those continues as they age, continues to go up. So we'll see a slight increase from the twenty-three to three thousand in that. You'll also see a request under capital for some new portables as well. The inspections and repairs at thirty-five, if you look over the history of it, we've respectively done thirty-six, forty-one, fifty-four and thirty-four thousand last year, or excuse me, this year's budgeted. Historically, we've come back for supplemental, as you're aware, when we, the ladder truck broke or a major pump broke. This year we have two new units on order within the fiscal year. So our hope is that this level funding would suffice to keep us through the year. Because it was the older trucks that were hurting us on that maintenance, maintenance issues. Contracts and agreements is flat, that's pretty much a locked. Those are for IMC software, our interfaces to the police dispatch, those are contracts, a lot of it's software related. The Verizon account, again, that's pretty much flat compared to what we have for units. The dues goes up slightly, now with the addition of Rich, Rich is involved in some other additional memberships to some of the chief organizations and such that reflect that. Education and training, again, flat. Food expense, level again, clothing allotment. Clothing allotment again is level or a little bit increased, that reflects.
It's, it's, it's the same as what you budgeted for two thousand, or for nineteen.
It did on the-
For the last X number of years, you still put forty-seven hundred.
Right, and it's reduced a little bit for level, just juggled around a little bit. So one thing, when I did meet with Terry, we had a difference of opinion on leveling and minus budgeting and the proposed. My intention of when he says come up with a minus five percent, I'm going by bottom line. He interpreted as why are certain line items up and certain line items low? And I explained, I'm just trying to juggle to get to the-
The bottom line.
The bottom line.
Right, it's not gonna be per line.
Right, and, and respectively, he understood that there's different ways to get there, you know, justification, but sometimes, let's just say clothing, I might say, well, last year I didn't use my clothing, I can probably afford to reduce that a little. Whereas this year I went up on radios because I need, so I'm juggling that to find my minus five, to find my level and to find my proposed. So that explains that because he had a financial way of looking at it that was completely different than mine and they're probably both a hundred percent right, but just so we're-
What's the bottom?
No, 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 mine, mine was, in fact, this is a perfect one to look at, the clothing allotment there. It's been the last two years, it's been a budget number of forty-seven hundred, okay? But his level funded, what he put in is only forty-two hundred. And then he requested forty-seven hundred, okay? So to me, that forty-two hundred is not correct, it should be forty-seven hundred as the level funded, okay? And again, tell me if I'm wrong there. And then, you know, so we're comparing apples to apples, not, you know, not apples to oranges, so, I mean, is that the way, and, and the next item down is, last year you were budgeted for, what's the next item? Conference or whatever?
Conference, education.
Conference, it's, you know, they were budgeted the last couple of years at twelve hundred dollars, all right? The level funded he had in there was two thousand and then he's looking for four thousand. So to me, it should be that he was, the level funded would be twelve hundred and your request is still for, for grand.
Okay.
And like, I mean, it all washes out maybe at the end, but line item by line item.
I get it.
And you're right.
Yeah, because-
But I see where he has his level funded budget to his fiscal year nineteen budget and as, I think as the department head, we have to give him the discretion to move monies where, when you say cut your budget five percent and he says, well, I really can't cut oxygen tanks by five percent, but we won't have food at the fire scene. I, that, that to me is a department head decision under the-
Things they can take a risk with.
Yeah, right, right, that's how I see it. So when, when his level funded budget is one thirty-seven, four seventy-five, how he gets to that, that's the department head's discretion, subject to, you know, he's got a liaison, but subject to his discretion of how he gets to that minus five, which is, I'm gonna assume the math is right at one twenty-nine, one. Yeah, I'm not worried about the five percent. What I'm at, what I'm saying is, level funded means it was the same dollar amount, line item by line item, as the year, as the year twenty-nineteen. For twenty-twenty, it should be, level funded is exactly the same, works out at the end, but you have no comparison and then you come in and you want to say, all right, well, I want, instead of twelve hundred dollars, I want four thousand dollars and here's the explanation. That's what I would rather have than-
And I think that's how it used to be, because I can recall sitting over here with the two amigos that we would look back and go, well, you're right, for two years it's been overfunded by a thousand on a certain line item and we've cut it and said, well, we'll just see if they bitch, we'll bring it down a little bit for whatever, be it electric, water, who knows? So in the end, you know, you're right, we would see the level funded number, I mean, Park and Rec's a perfect example. Their water bill went up five hundred dollars or five, went to five grand and we thought those wells went down, it'd be thirteen, fourteen hundred a year. So the following year came in at five grand, we put five grand, they took it upon themselves and say, oh, look it, you know, last year the water bill was fourteen hundred, we just took twenty-five hundred and put it over here. That's, I guess it's their call, but in the same breath you're going, well, Jesus.
What I'm saying on this piece of paper-
Yeah, I understand.
Has, it should be level funded, should be what the budget was for that same line item the year before. And if it's different-
It's kind of how it's always been.
It's almost like, it's almost like you need an extra column, right? Because- And again, I'm not, you know.
No, no.
No, 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 I think it's a fair discussion because I think you're getting to the same thing, but I think, for example, Terry, I think when we went from one chief to the other chief and, and in the police or the fire and they have a different way of going about their budget, of how they want to structure their department, we shouldn't tie their hands by saying, you have a level funded budget, it's gonna-
The other takes you a few budgets to figure out.
Right.
And then you saw it in other departments where they, accounting is asking them to move money around.
Like there was the food one and some other ones.
That's exactly, that's exactly-
Supplies, so.
He has spent, he came from a different organization-
Right.
And he's had to, him and the accountant have had to get used to each other and how they, what they expect from each other.
That's fair.
And he's made those changes over the last couple of years.
And that's gonna affect-
Just like Randy talked about earlier.
Your food expense may come out, there might be two of them, one is, you know, emergency food and, you know, firehouse food, I don't know, but whatever Laura is telling you that she'd like to see from the accounting perspective and now you've got to adjust your budget line items accordingly and you've moved, the budget didn't change, they just moved line item to line item. You couldn't have a level funded budget in that particular instance because of a change, external change.
And what happens with those actions is now you're also asking for a reduced budget. So now you're taking those items and trying to reduce and decide which ones are more applied, you know, can be applicable to a reduction, which ones are fixed.
Right, because you had to prioritize.
I think you're both right, Terry.
Yeah, I totally get where you're coming from, but I think you have to give, you have to give the department head-
No, and I totally agree, especially you're gonna be, you know, this is gonna be after multiple things, you'll have, you know, you'll have a better idea.
More stable.
More stable than that, but, you know, for me, looking at it, everybody else does it.
Well, I'd like to see where he pulled it from too, because where did you pull three grand to add to that line item? But yet you're still level funded.
But you can see-
Which is great.
But you can. Yeah. I go through and I go plus and minus-
No, understood.
On these things and, and just to get an idea. And then when there's something where there's a reduction, you give us an explanation. And when there's a larger, you know, an increase, you give us an explanation. Because short of that, I mean, we can just look at it and say, all right, well, things are the same, we don't even need to, we don't even need to talk about it. But this, you know, going through line item by line item, we can talk about it and we can see where, where you're coming from.
Right.
From what we talked about and what we budgeted last year.
And one of the guidance I use is also is our, you know, our year-to-date sheet that, that tells me where I'm, what, where am I taking hits and why? And I should be at sixty, seventy percent right now, which I, you know, I am on some, most, some are off, some are ahead, you know? And we try to, we try to use those.
Bottom line is, we're here today, we gotta go by this-
Yeah, right.
And get through this.
Okay.
But I understand Terry's point, yeah.
Yeah, I do too.
So what are we gonna do for the future?
What, what I wanna see, because I, I can see both sides on this and I agree that your hands shouldn't be tied because you can't predict the future on certain things. What I wanna see is that when it comes down to the actual expenditure, I wanna see per line what was actually spent on that line so that we have that accurate bottom line.
Previous year.
From the previous year. I, I don't wanna tie your hands, but I also do, I wanna know exactly where the money was spent so that there is an accurate recording of, of where that was spent from year to year. If there was a transfer, okay, but when we have the actual expenditures, I would like it to be actually in the correct line item.
And that's some of what Laura's been helping move things around.
Sure, sure. And that's not meant to beat anybody up whatsoever, but I think it gives us the answers that we're looking for-
We wanna know what you're looking for because I wake up prepared.
Right, that's what I'm saying, for the future, I just want to see it, you know, the way I'm talking about it, which is the same way everybody else does it in their budget.
Most, not everyone.
And then the one last thing to capture in, in that whole thought process is, certain budgets, and you know, example here, it wasn't last year, but this year before, there was fire apparatus study, right? And it was five thousand bucks. Well, if there's one-time expenses in your prior year budget, your level funded, but, and that, but that expense would fall off, that doesn't give you the five thousand bucks.
That's what I'm getting, right, right.
Yes, yeah.
And that's what, that's what you see, so turnout gear, nine thousand a year, went up to twenty-one thousand-
Oxygen bottles or something.
Last year, and now it's at eighteen-five, because it went, because you, you don't need as much, but because it went up the year before by ten thousand dollars.
You took it out of capital, put it in operation.
Right.
Is there always a revolving?
No, I understand it, but it went up ten thousand because you needed it, which I get, but then this coming year, which you don't need as much, I get it.
Right.
But instead of it just dropping off a little bit, you've absorbed it somewhere else where apparently you need it. So that's what I think, and I see where Terry's coming from.
And I don't care at the end, I mean-
No, no, it's still the same number, but-
But it's still, it's just, you know, what did you, what did we allow you in the budget for this versus that? Not to say we're gonna cut it or anything, but I'd just like to see where it's-
To me, it's more frustrating that someone, we, we had to raise it for a reason, which we did, and I'm not bitching. But then a year or two out to see, well, we don't really need it now and instead of it going away or coming down, I guess in the past that we were told why something was going up and hey, the good news is I don't need turnout gear this year as much. I'm gonna save ten grand there.
Well, there's always the context, Joe, do you remember one year when we were all betting about how much we were gonna pay for replacement tires?
No, yeah, right.
We had to buy replacement tires.
And, and we kind of now, we actually look at every line item and say, you know, is that a capital, you know, is that a one-shot deal? Because God forbid we put it in the budget and then, you know.
It stays in there.
If you were here earlier talking about our, our taxes going up and so other crap we're going through, that was the same kind of thing, North Pond, I'm bitching, if it goes through, I'd like a separate line item. So in thirty years, if it goes off, it'd come off our tax base and everyone in the room, not in this room, said, Joe, your taxes never go down, what the hell are you talking about? You know, and I'm, you chuckle, but, you know, this is the same thing, right? You know, you're up ten grand on turnout gear, which is great, this year you don't feel you need as much, but instead of letting us know, hey, that line item's too high, you're absorbing it somewhere else, which we get. So it's just different for us to see it this way, that's all. And it's, just like Terry says, it's just different. You know, it's all the same, but it's not, you know, we're used to saying, oh, look at that, it went down and you're going, oh, by the way, I'm going up over here and this is why.
We're explanation, so we know.
Yeah.
Where, where the, you're right.
It's all good.
Where, where are we?
The part between good morning and a good day.
Does everybody know our new deputy?
We still-
Yes.
Okay, I want to make sure everybody knows Richard.
All right, so, where were we, we were somewhere around-
Closing.
So, conference and education goes up a little again reflecting Rich's role in some of his professional development. The addition in the, to four thousand on the proposed is, kind of wraps into if we hire two more medics, which will be in our next presentation, that, that relates to professional development. Our hose inspection, this is for our annual, third party that comes in and inspects every hose flow test, certifies the pumps, ladders, all that stuff. The, which is a, we're actually ahead of the curve, many departments are scrambling right now with the new OSHA requirements coming out, we're already doing that, so. The minor equipment, again, sixteen thousand is level funded. The supplies, level funded, which was a reduction from previous years. This, this kind of transformation with Laura, that we started to talk about. Investigate, oxygen, oxygen is a decrease in extinguishers. We've repeatedly not spent it, so.
The one example I used.
I know. Premonition, huh?
Thanks, Mr. Moblin.
Chris, you read it.
And you watch the liaison, right, just want to make sure, yes, all right.
Investigations, again, level, that's a hit or miss depending on what happens throughout the year.
How come oxygen's up and recruit, oxygen's down and recruitment's up? Oh, I get it now.
Yeah.
Kidding.
The turnout gear, as we talked about briefly, previous years it was at the nine to thirteen thousand over years and there was also a different capital line item. The gear is not allowed at the academy for anybody that takes a class if it's over ten years old. When you figure forty-ish sets of gear and do the math, we're always buying three to five sets as they expire. So this becomes more of an operational. The increase to twenty-one is resulting if we do hire new, new staff. Community outreach, again, level funded, goes up on the other request of three thousand. We're looking at adding that back to Citizens Fire Academy, which used to be, ten years ago, fifteen years ago we did it. We'd like to be providing that to the public again. Career clothing, level funded, that's a contracted related issue. And again, the increase to seventy-two hundred in the rank column reflects two additional personnel. Hardware, software, again, level. Capital, hose, what we're trying to do is one truck at a time is replace, our hose is getting to the end of, end of its life. Last year we, we funded this, we have the purchase order. Right now we're getting ready to fund, but we're kind of, we're waiting for the new truck and some things and trying to drag our feet on it as best we can. But this would replace another truck's full bed of hose, basically. Radio equipment, we, we talked about the portables, this would replace six to ten radios roughly depending on the brand. We've been trying, working with Kevin, we've been trying to work together to get some consistency between us because we're, we're kind of all over the place on our, on our radio brands, types, things like that. And we're all, both our infrastructures challenged. So recently the police just went up on our microwave tower that we had invested in a few years ago. So he was able to utilize that and reduce costs and increase his, his capabilities. And we moved together into the pump house as well. So we were able to team up, make some infrastructure changes that really helped the police more than helped us. We're both on the same page now and we're talking about build outs in the future that would benefit both of us and try to keep it in.
And that other work, is that done, is that actually done?
Yeah, it's up and running. In security, last year we, we, we're kind of, we're addressing those things, it was ten thousand dollars, addressing those things in the station that are twenty years old. We went through the bunk house, bought new bunks, mattresses, bought some used wall petitions, so the bunk rooms are more set up for, for four members with some privacy now and some stuff. We're looking at, I think we've, I think we've expended half of the last years, but we're in the books getting prices for some tweaks to the camera system for the advancement of the ALS and some of that, so we'll start rolling in some of that, those things as well, finish up that. This is to expand more cameras, some of the security stuff starts falling apart, we're starting to see that as well. And that's it for capital. Oh, excuse me, phone system, forty-five hundred dollars.
Now that's your share of the system because the police have another share?
Correct, so the, the police and our phone systems are the same. The guts are in the police station, the lines are over in our station, but all the brains are in their station, but we can talk. So the, the proposal is to merge the system so it actually will merge into the town system here. So I can pick up and call Carl on an extension or accounting and stuff like that. This is for the hardware cost for the fire station, the reoccurring costs fall under your budget or-
Well, it's under public safety building budget under telephone, but I've asked Kevin, and I don't know if he's asked you, to find- to find out when we migrate to this new telephone system, which would be a voiceover internet protocol, whether or not there'll be any shedding of phone lines, which are a different type of recurring costs, so that when we bring on this new technology, computerized type costs, which we had, went through with the same thing with the town hall system, whether or not we'll achieve any offset there. So if you could just work with Kevin, I'm just trying to find out. And he, you may have to do that with Valley to determine, because they can, they know what, what we have for our phone lines and numbers and circuits and all.
There's certain lines that we don't even know we have sometimes.
Right, so, so that's why, we, we just want to find out when we go to, if we go to put this in another line item, am I also shedding off some costs from that line item by changing the phone system from a, you know, just a switch in, 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 well, the switch is in your building, the switch is in the police building, that, because you two share that phone system. So I need to know, as we go along, to get ready to have a new one-time capital expense and then one, um, recurring expenses, am I shedding any other recurring expenses off for phone lines? And that is the question that I've asked the chief, and I'd like you to work with him on that too.
Yeah. Some of it's a little moving target because of the fiber part of it.
Yep, we.
It gets wrapped up in the IT grant piece, some of the, they're able to share some of the equipment.
Probably utilize them.
Right, and we're all tenants with each other, and then this way, we can just call each other with two or three line, you know, digits as opposed to a whole phone.
Any questions on the fire?
I was at the dump the other day, and they were throwing away hose, which I'm sure you have too, or it's gone by or whatever. And there were very large brass connections on the end, they were throwing those away too. Is there a way that we could at least get them into the recycle bin?
Um, I'm not sure if they're, I'm not sure what they threw away was the large, L D F.
Yeah, this was, uh, this was some large alum, some large diameter hose that had been surplus. That's an aluminum coupling that's on that. It's not brass.
It looked like brass to me as well.
Yeah, it's just, it's a polished aluminum.
Oh.
If it's the hose I was thinking of. We did have two sections of it. Uh, it, it can be removed, but it's difficult to clean everything off of it. So typically, the metal wants clean metal. So there's parts of that hose that end up bound inside the connection, so it's a factory sealed connection, so it's kind of difficult to take it apart. We can certainly bring it the next time we do that to try to bring it over there and see if they'll take it anyway. We could ask.
I think they will.
Well, they probably did, you just didn't see it.
A lot of junk come out.
What we typically do is we'll offer it to, um, like Saunders, um, is great with us, they let us both, um, put our dock, our boat down at their docks annually for the whole summer, so that's our first phone call. You need any hose to, you know, line the docks.
Line the docks, yeah.
And there's a few other people.
It's bothering, it's give and take with people.
Sure.
And then if it's sat there for too long, into the dump it goes, so.
Transfer station.
Excuse me, the recycling facility.
Right, we do not bury anything.
On that note though, I will tell you that we've gotten a lot better on our recycling. Yeah, we're not perfect, nobody is, but we've gotten a lot better partner wise, yeah. We're, we're separating, we're actually bringing our own down to landfill now rather than just one collection site where it was kind of.
You do realize there are a lot of perfect people on this stuff.
Uh, in the committee, I've heard, I've heard all that, so.
All right, EMS. So I'll come back to, um.
So we can figure that out.
Where is EMS?
Uh, just keep going down, you'll find it.
That's on the earlier, uh.
No, it's, uh, in fire.
Oh.
It's just.
Part of it's like later on.
Right, okay.
Same, just down further. Who's saving on a tab?
There we go. Thank you.
That was one of those line items I've been hearing.
Yes.
One of the line items you adjusted.
EMS salaries, I'll come back to at the end, because that's obviously the, uh, the big topic of discussion. Radio maintenance and supplies, again, uh, that's level funded, pretty much goes parallel with fire. We know, we typically have X amount to work on. Inspections and repairs rise a little bit. The ambulance fleet gets a little bit older. Equipment gets a little older, so that shows a slight rise to the eight thousand. The, um, contracts and agreement, again, that's a fixed price. Uh, there's a little bit of, if you remember last year, we had, I don't know, quote me, it was twenty-some odd thousand dollars, I think, under contracts and agreements. That was fire and EMS, and we reduced the fire contracts and agreements and put it over to ambulance, uh, contracts and agreements. The twelve thousand to fifteen thousand is just a little bit of adjustment to stuff we missed, equipment like the, the DFib, that's the new, um, twelve lead, the ALS equipment now falls out of warranty and needs a, a contract, so that's, that's reflected. Recertifications, again, level funded, uh, from last year. Education and training, thirty-five thousand, um, from last year. Previous year was forty thousand, previous year before that was twenty thousand. So just to recap, what that's doing is O E M S has changed the system from what they, what we used to do for recertifications to now what they call N C C R, and it's six nights of training over two years or basically a year and a half. This is a third party that comes in and teaches that at our facility, so we're saving the cost of sending people to other facilities to do that. That is also the money revol, involved in our ALS transformation to help us get, get, um, ready for that. So that's slowly starting to see a reduction. By next year, I think we'll see a bigger dent of that reducing as well as Rich in, in-house takes over more of the things. There'll always be an education and training line item, obviously. And it'll, and we have ALS training, which gets more expensive, so. That'll, that'll, number will hopefully reduce as we move forward. Medical requirement, that is bloated around, and as you'll see, I reduced it completely. And it's one of those where I don't know what the line item is used for. I guess, you know, that at one point, we might have been using it for.
Physicals?
Physicals or something, but that's not enough.
We, we do that, we do that out of the, uh, the town general fund budget for health, dental, retirement, and blah, blah, blah. We do it out of that.
You know, where they go for a hep B shot or something like that, I, it's, that comes, was coming out of the fireside, so. That line item's got reduced because we weren't, we weren't utilizing or eliminating. Ambulance billing, that's proportional, um, based on the amount we bill, it's.
Three point nine percent.
Three point four percent of whatever we go, they get. Conference and travel, and education, again, from eighteen to fifteen, reduced a little bit, goes up again a little bit should we get. Basically, the, the far right, those numbers reflect, should we hire two new people, some of the auxiliary costs. Minor equipment, slight increase as some of the stuff slowly gets damaged and replaced. Supplies, ten thousand to eleven thousand, six. This again is a little bit of adjustment from some of the stuff Laura was looking for. Oxygen and extinguishers, oxygen and, on this, this one is more legit and stays accurate. The insurance premium, that's a flat, through Carl.
Well, what happens is the, um, that's the EMS funded share of it, the, uh, the product is usually about twenty-nine to thirty thousand, so, um, the general fund already carries a line item for a general fund share of this. Because it's, it's covering also the, the firefight is part of it too.
Medical supplies, so this saw a bump, a gradual bump up, and you'll see that, that to date is not expended a lot out of that. But there's, as we get ready to launch for ALS, there'll be some drug costs, there'll be some, some other hard costs that will, um, will come out of this in the, in this last quarter. However, um, we did go down from sixteen, from eighteen thousand to sixteen thousand. And I think next year will give us a true meaning of what, we were trying to forecast stuff and we just didn't know. So this will start to slowly reduce to actual cost for medical supplies as we move forward. Personal protective equipment, again, level funded, that's used for, as all our people, for their, a lot of the corporate clothing and boots and that. And then under capital, we have no capital requests this year for, um, for ambulance. Back to salaries. So you'll see a, a two thousand dollar dispatcher training. That's a new line item that, um, one of the main functions of dispatch is E M D, emergency medical dispatch, which was initiated by the state. And they're a, obviously, it's one of the most integral parts of the nine-one-one call. And to say that you're not going to train people to better their performance, and there's a whole, by law, we have to, for them to get nine-one-one grants, we have to be, um, listening to, to their tapes, scoring them, reflecting that, doing all that. But we haven't had the other half of it of taking best practices and trying to improve it. So this, this, what this would be funding is for the, um, dispatchers to do, I believe it's, uh, eight hours, eight hours of, that's paying for them to sit in a seat for, uh, best practices.
Is that being carried under Kevin's submission of the dispatch budget? Because it's not in the fire one. It's not in your fire EMS one here, so.
It's in EMS here, under.
Well, the version I have here doesn't.
Dispatch training, top line of.
Oh, there.
He's back up.
Oh, you jumped back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was down here looking at.
Oh, no.
I'll do the same thing.
So that's what we're proposing, is to be able to start, just start being able to, best practices for the dispatcher, something that's been missing. We did a class two years ago. We did definitely see an improvement. Um, I know Dennis, uh, Kevin is proposing a dispatch supervisor as well, uh, which is something I'd strongly recommend. You know, we've looked at regionalization, that fell through. We looked at, like, now we're proposing a grant to look at regionalization again with Westfield, which may or may not work, we don't know. But we have to look at dispatch as a profession and best practices, because it's the, it's the gateway to the emergency. And if it starts there wrong, a lot of things can go wrong, and a lot of people in this room can hold liability for, uh, the things that go wrong, especially myself and Kevin. So we have to be looking at improving best practices, supervis, which recalls for some supervision, which can get from many different ways, from, uh, from a full-time person and shift changings and all the things that Kevin's proposing. Perhaps it's something you walk into with someone taking on extra responsibilities for extra money, I don't know. It's something we have to address. There, there's a liability hanging out there that we have to address, and I just wanted to do my soapbox for two minutes to support Kevin and things. So the, the big question was, if we remember right, we were gonna, we hired one additional person last year. Yeah, when we did add Rich to the, which holds a medic license as well. And the thought was we would hire one this year and one next year. So combination of O E M S slash our medical control has kind of thrown a little curveball at us in the, in the event that they want, we're getting ready to do our license for next month, April. They want two medics in the ambulance at all times, in a basic, so we have to have three people in the ambulance. Part of that reason is because the medics that we can hire are new, newer, so they might only have been out a year, out of school, things like that. That's a, that's the type of person we're typically recruiting. So because of that, they want two medics in the back of the ambulance at all times, which means you have to have a driver, which would be our career staff, a basic, whatever. So our license has to be eight hours a day minimum, seven days a week the first year. So in trying to juggle all that, it basically becomes a little bit impossible. For April to July, what Rich and I are looking at, and I talked to Carl a little bit about, is if you remember before, you appropriated a, a part-time inspector position, that that money has not been filled for. So we'd like to utilize that money through this year for per diem, uh, medics that will help fill our calendar.
Through June thirtieth?
Through June thirtieth.
Or through Labor Day, because we thought we may also.
Well, that was going to be part two. So we'd like to use that money for the per diem medics. That'll help us on the weekends, the day staff. We'll be able to do the double medic with Rich in the, in our current staffing with, from Monday through Friday. But on weekends, we would utilize that money to put a per diem medic in the back with the existing staff that we already have. So we'd be using a part-time person. Night times would be dealing with Westfield similar to what we have. So then, we go forward and hire two, fund for fiscal twenty twenty. However, we know it's going to take three months minimum to get people up to staff. So whether, by the time we advertise, by the time we do background checks, medicals, hiring, all that stuff, we're going to be looking at September, October. So what we, we would propose is hiring two to start in October of next year, this year, sorry, this year. From July first to October, we would again look at using that part-time money that's sitting in the fire line item to, to address that, to keep that portion level funded. The inspection process, Rich has absorbed more of that, I've absorbed more of that, and we're continuing to use buddy vecchio on a per inspection basis. It's working. It's not the best solution, but it's, it's working right now. Uh, but I think that it's more important to get that ALS process up and running. So as we look at, what I'm, what I'm handing out now is, the first part is the actual cost, salaries, benefits. Second page is the benefits broken down, it all broken down to actual cost. The, so the initial, two, two medics at, you're looking at a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine-month appropriations, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So with that set, that would be worst-case scenario. When I try to look at this over the three-year build-out that we have to go to, um, to twenty-four seven, et cetera, it opens us up for adding two people fits perfectly into the SAFER grant, which is for firefighters and or secondary, um, jobs of EMS. So the SAFER grant is a federal grant that wants firefighters in the street. It's to help protect towns, um, about firefighting. It has nothing to do with ambulance. However, you can use those people for double duty. So what I would propose is we apply for the SAFER grant, which is a three-year commitment from the, from the town. First year, you'll see it breaks it down, the federal share is sixty-five percent, town share thirty-five percent. Same for second year, third year, it flops over. So at the end of three years, we've spent, um, I should say, the total cost of the town is two hundred and twenty-five thousand. And we've saved over two hundred and seventy-six thousand in that three-year element. And what that does is allows us to be able to increase, hire the two medics. We would need to keep them on day shifts for the three years. After year three, we can move schedules and do what we want to expand, expand the system. Because it's really, the, the grant's about fire protection, it's not about any of this. So they want six people, the goal is to have six people at every fire going out the door for seventy percent of the time, which is daily, on our twelve to twelve, or six to six, excuse me. And another note at the bottom, from July first to January this year, we've, we've spent fifty-five thousand dollars in outside costs to Westfield Maglong for ALS fees. So when you do the math, it's, you're looking at ninety to a hundred thousand dollars a year we're spending outside to bring ALS to the town.
And that's coming out of the EMS revenue we've.
Coming out of the EMS revenue.
Versus about three hundred grand a year.
Three, four years.
And once we migrate up to ALS, you then can charge a rate structure that's commensurate with ALS versus basic.
We still do. So the transporting ambulance. We still do, so the transporting ambulance pays, sends the bill. So, so right now, we have an ALS, let me back up even further, because when I, when I talked a little bit about the dispatch and EMD, when the state mandated emergency medical dispatch, it also mandates what gets an ALS ambulance and what doesn't. So when the dispatch call comes in, they're asking certain questions that go through a process and flags it to a, they call Charlie or Delta, which means it's requiring an ALS ambulance, which you have to call an ALS ambulance. That's signed off by the doctors, it's signed off by the state. So you don't really have an option of saying, I'm not calling an ALS, I'm ambulance, or you become liable. So can we reduce those costs, it doesn't really matter, it's, it's the state is dictating what we, we get, respond to. Um, so I would say yes, those numbers. The first question is, we're charging ALS. The second question is, ours, our prices haven't updated in probably five or six years. We need to make that decision of whether we do or we don't, which would be slight increases because you can charge five thousand dollars for a call, but you're only going to get four hundred if it's a Medicare call. You know, that, that's, it's private industry, you get more money, there's a lot of things going on with that. But that'll be a whole separate presentation on the revenue side.
How'd that work out for you?
But when, when the ALS call is done, we're, I know we're, we'd be charging a BLS rate.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Is Westfield or Agwam also billing the patient at an ALS, a BLS rate separately?
No, no, we bill, so the transporting ambulance bills for the ALS or ALS depending on the skills that we're doing.
Even if it's an intercept?
Correct.
And another town takes the person?
If another town transport the person, we get nothing.
Don't they usually put them on our ambulance?
Where, who we usually transport, they jump on ours and we, they charge us two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars every time they jump on. So, now, that'll reduce, that won't go away a hundred percent, we'll still have some nighttime stuff, but it'll be mental. Correct. Um, so what I'd like to do is propose that, you know, we go for the SAFER grant, we look at this for a three-year period, not just annually. But the, so the funding, so Carl kind of brought up earlier of, um, can you go for the grant? Put that money in and then get the grant and not use the money for the people.
We just talked about that with Park and Rec, right?
Right, surprisingly, under this, at the, at the conference I was just at, I talked to the grant director and, and he said, we just cannot hire anybody. So you could fund, go to July first, not hire, and wait and see if the grant comes up. By, by July, I think we'd have a good known, we'd be knowing if we have the grant or not. Um, and then wait until after you officially sign the grant and then you can hire. But if you went to July first, hire, got the grant August first, you're screwed. So, and I confirmed that with him yesterday as well, so. We are, can fund for the worst case, nine months. And then if we get the grant, hire after October and we can.
Right, we were trying to address that issue.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
After you, I did confirm it with him yesterday, that.
Great. But we just want to make sure those are important considerations in the timing of our recruitment of people and how it's going to work and how it'll be beneficial to the town and help subsidize their costs.
But if, if we didn't get the grant, but we do budget the money, that would have to get built into the tax rate anyway, right?
You're, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so you gotta go plan for worst case.
Right, right, I get it. And do you have any idea what, um, on the EMS side, what monies, besides the portion of the fifty-five thousand that would fall off? What would be on the income side, because I think we actually become mutually to other towns surrounding, right? It might be small, it might be five hundred bucks, I don't know.
Well, there's two things you can do, you can say yes and go. But if you have one ambulance, you have the right to say, no, we're not going because we're protecting our town. We probably wouldn't do that. Uh, one concern I do have is us going to Granville.
Right.
Westfield goes to Granville now, um, so we'd have to work that out there. We have found a mutual aid to Westfield even for basic a couple of times.
Yeah.
So what we're seeing is we've repeatedly looking, I think we've had probably two or three incidents this year where we're looking for an EMD or an ALS intercept and they're not available.
Right.
Westfield, Agwam, West Springfield, AMR, nobody's available.
Oh, you can call A, you can call AMR for an intercept?
Yeah, we'll go down to five or six of them. With the, the shootings we had on, um, Binding Hill Road.
Yeah.
We went to Westfield, Agwam, Southfield, we finally found one in Simsberry, so.
But you're at base date by the time they get to you.
Could be.
And that happened two weeks ago too.
Yep. Yeah, right.
But I, I'm just curious, like, with Granville, because now we're closer to portions of Granville than Westfield is, so we become.
It's a reality.
Yeah.
As a, as a practice, it would be slow for us to be responding to them because they would want to protect their communities both to and have a service that is up and running and in position to provide that service. So they've even said, when you go paramedic, we're not going to be your first customer.
Okay, make it short.
Which is good because that services us better because it allows us to focus more on what we're doing here and get ourselves ready for that next step.
But the reality is, Westfield may not be available. They'll probably kick back to us.
Right.
And then a lot.
You would think if they're losing, if they're losing all the calls that they're coming over here for, that they'd want to make that up by now.
They have so many calls.
I was going to say that today, look at the money, Carl, I don't think it's.
Oh, yeah, they build fire stations.
They're, they're, they're holding back one ambulance out of the city, different groups.
And that's, that's, right, that's their thing, right.
And then the last, uh, the last page is, well, where's this all, where's this scope of, um, where does Southwick fit in compared to other communities? And this just kind of gives you the number of staffing, size of towns, call volume, and where, where we are versus where some of the others are. Uh, the only thing I think is Munson is at seven and I think they just went for two additional people as well, just in this fiscal budget that we're doing now.
That is, that's enlightening, that, that piece there.
So we're right in with everybody else, little, little less in some ways.
With Southwick.
Yeah, well, we're, I like to say, you know, we, we have a robust, um, call force that continually comes.
I don't see Southampton.
I took Southampton out, out of there because they have one full-time person, the chief, and they have fifty-one per diem, uh, medics and firefighters.
Well, that's one way to do it.
What a nightmare that must be.
I wouldn't even want to, I have no problem scheduling what we have.
Exactly.
And train and.
And then what ends up happening, they have a lot of, they can shift unfulfilled.
And they're not covering their ambulance like they should, and East Hampton bailed them out quite often, so.
Well, I'm sure you guys have watched some of the issues they've run into with their license, you're up there and you're, and you're looking at what you can do to make sure you don't fall prey to this in circumstances.
And a lot of it's, you know, in defense of that, a lot of it's a new department, which, and then they had some players that made life interesting.
Yes.
Any questions?
Chief, I had one on the cost per EMS. They're working forty-two hours a week, so we have to pay them two hours overtime.
No.
No?
That's contracted, uh, so it's, they, because they work a, um, twelve-hour shift for four days on and four days off.
Okay.
So you'd have forty-eight hours. If you do the math, it kicks in, they have a three, a three-day week every three or four weeks.
Yep.
So through contract, we just average it at forty-two, even though they work forty-eight.
Okay, and last question, maybe not for you, or maybe for Carl. BSP, it's eight thousand dollars a year per person?
Twenty-seven one?
Uh, vacation and.
Yeah.
Personal, it's, you've got a second sheet.
Oh, oh, that's vacation, sick and personal, sorry, I'm thinking of BSP, I, I, there's an I company.
I'll start my own, if anyone wants to sign up at thirty-four thousand.
Okay, I was going to say, holy cow.
Yeah, that'd be pretty sweet, actually.
Holy cow, okay.
No, yeah, Linda, that, that would be, that would be whatever the, that would be whatever the contract call spot that's been negotiated by the selectman and attorney due prey for.
Which is generous.
Your average number of vacation days of ten days a week, or ten days a, a year, and then the number of sick days and the three personal days, so.
It, it's a little more, well, I guess not, if it's twelve hours a day.
Yeah, don't forget for them, a day is a day. So we think of it as eight hours, but it's whatever that shift is, a day is a day.
Yep.
True it that way, they use it that.
Just made me feel better, I'm looking at that thinking, holy cow.
It's a hell of an eyeglass program.
Yeah.
Yeah. What do you get for that?
Me and Russ just started our own, anyone wants to sign up, the premium's thirty-five thousand.
Surgery for everybody.
Yeah, yeah.
And you're.
Pay us cash.
Thank you, Chief.
Any other questions?
Well done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Are we going to do the rest of the day?
You too.
You, you know you.
Are we the last one?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't want to stay up too long.
All right.
Thank you.
Selectmen, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Uh, you're not participating in there. You're the one that's part of that.
Linda, do you still want this, or you want me to just turn?
I know I did.
Okay.